Check, check, check.
Yeah, I'm cutting out, it's like, I can't even get my knees up anymore. You're tall. I know, that's why, wow, I need to tell her.
One job she does back here.
Hi, hi. Check it. Good fun. I'm not, I'm not saying this, but. Thank you, there's the old doctor. Hope that letter has worked. Sorry. No, it's all good, it's all good. Why, yeah? Did you get it?
Oh, wow, wow.
Always wrong. Oh, yeah.
How are you guys doing?
What?
How are you guys doing?
I'm good, how are you doing?
You're almost there.
I know, it's like, it's starting to feel like the whole strip.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm fine.
What's going on?
I have to have emergency surgery next week.
What?
Yeah, it'll be fine.
So, yes, he's freaking out?
Yeah.
Oh, sure is.
And then I'm at Vale, so it's been fine. It's been a piece of fun, I'm sorry.
Listen.
Everybody kept saying, but he's in love. People was freaking out. And I was like, Sarah's supposed to do it tomorrow. And I figured out, I told my friends, I'm gonna do it after work. Because I went Wednesday and they told me, let's do it this Friday.
Was it let's update or something?
Yeah, but it's punching that I can't sit for longer than like, so driving to work about killed, like, like, like. Like you believe. So if I can't sit, I can't, I can't sit. So if you think about that whole ramification on it.
Yeah.
So I have a standing plan, but, um, my leg goes numb. Yeah, and I can't, it's, it's hard. So they gotta go in and do it, they're gonna try, they're trying not to do the fusion because then they're out like twelve weeks. They're gonna do a micro dissection in two or three weeks, so just go in and make drills through my hip. And then to get to the, the back is the lower bell file. And then pull out the bad bits and just leave it alone. And then with my body. Because one side of it's good, it's the other side is not.
I don't get to, I don't have honor.
Yeah, my kids are my kids. My mom is tired. It's just interesting because then I like oil and water, but.
What are you gonna do? That's what you do, that's what you know, like.
Well, and I'm just gonna be going to the toilet. But I just told her I'd go to her house because I don't need her at my house. And then she's like, my mom's clinical, ACV, so there's no reason. My house isn't dirty, but it's not easy. Because I have three dogs and four kids.
Oh, I have two kids, four dogs, and a husband, so.
Yeah, so I like, I don't need her, her, when was the last time you took a toothbrush to the baseball?
Yeah, she would have a stroke in my house.
Yeah, uh, mine too.
All right, good morning, welcome Glendale City Council Budget Works Up Session of April eighth, twenty twenty-one. This meeting is called to order. Attendance roll call, I do know that Mr. Aldama is not here. He will be in later, but we'll go ahead and do a roll call. Starting with Mr. Aldama, Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Melner.
All right, I am here.
Very good, Councilmember Tomachoff.
Present.
Councilmember Turner?
Present.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah.
Chair is present. Moving on to item number one, Ms. Bauer.
Fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget workshop.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. Today is our sixth budget workshop. I think it's the seventh budget workshop and also our second all-day budget workshop on the fiscal year twenty-two operating budget. With that, I'll turn over the presentation to Mr. Phelps to go over the follow-up items from the March sixth, the February, sorry, April sixth meeting.
Great, good morning, Mayor, members of the council. Again, thank you again for your investment of time in this. I wanted to follow up on two items from conversations that took place at our workshop on Tuesday. The first was around our benefit plan and what the impact is to the changes for the two thousand FY twenty, the FY twenty-one, twenty-two benefits play portions. I'm gonna talk only about the employee contribution, which is typically about ten percent of the total cost of the healthcare. And something that we've done this year as part of our initiatives to help control our increasing costs within the entire healthcare industry is to really move people towards wellness and best practices. And so this year, we, we've added a couple new items that we think that most of our employees will be able to take advantage of. And so we've always had a wellness credit. So there's some things you can do through our wellness program by going into the employee portal. And then once you've done that work, it reduces the monthly contribution, or the pay, per pay period down by five dollars. Excuse me, that'd be monthly compensation down by five dollars. This year, we added two other incentives into that. And one, for the first time, is we are going to, for our employees that, that do not use tobacco or agree to go into a cessation program, we will also provide an additional ten dollar discount. And then because of the COVID, we wanted to incentivize our employees to get the vaccination and get it done. And so for those employees who will get the, the COVID, once we have verification, we'll give them an additional ten dollar or a hundred and twenty dollars for the year. So if we look at our most popular benefit plan, which is our EPO medical plan, it's the most robust plan in terms of benefits. The new rate for this, for this year is sixty dollars and four cents, which is an increase of about seven dollars over the prior year. However, if they apply the five dollar wellness discount, they get their vaccination completed. And they are one of our, I think we estimate that roughly eighty-eight percent of, eighty-eight, eighty-seven percent of our employees are non-tobacco users. What will happen is, is that their sixty dollar and four cent per, per month contribution actually gets reduced down, if you're just for the employee only, gets reduced down to thirty-five dollars and four cents. So that's actually a decrease for the coming year for our employees. And, and that's good, when we reached out to our neighboring cities in terms of their healthcare plan, we did not come across another city that's actually having lower employee contribution. If I looked at our PPO, same kind of a scenario, the contribution, contribution for a single employee would be forty-nine dollars, eighty-one cents. But with the wellness, the COVID, and the cessation discount, it brings it down to a, a monthly contribution of twenty-four dollars and eighty-one cents. We've had a big effort to move employees to the high deductible plan. Because the high deductible plan, studies have shown, help really manage how people use the healthcare system. Because they're more a partner in it. So you see kind of less non-essential types of healthcare, less, I don't want to use the word frivolous, but certainly people have to make more deliberative choices, especially in terms of being in-network or out-of-network. And so our HDHP plan, it actually, as an employee, if you do the wellness and do the, the COVID and do the tobacco cessation, actually, they will receive back on their payroll check a monthly credit of ten dollars and eighty-seven cents. So in reality, those who are part of the high deductible plan will actually pay zero out of pocket and receive just a little over a hundred and twenty dollars for the year. And again, we do that based on utilization and what the actual cost is back to the city. So it's a, basically, it's a partnership with the employee, helps us control our healthcare costs. And at the same time, it becomes a very, a very affordable plan for them. So we hope that information is valuable. The second item that there is quite a bit of discussion regarding the, what the budgeted increases were to our employees, our non-represented employees. So my office had a chance to work with Mayor Wires yesterday. We went through a series of, of discussions. He asked if we increased our cost of living from the budgeted one percent in the draft budget to the one and a half percent, what that impact would be. So we went back, worked with our staff. And if we did a one and a half percent COLA, which we did verify the number, it's one point three percent is the current projections for COLA. So we know this would fully cover the cost of living allowance. And then we went with the one and a half percent merit pay. And then we also have money in for the, for our citywide incentive program for innovation and customer service that, that the impact to the general fund, and this impact includes the, kind of the benefit cost and the pension cost, would have an impact of roughly two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to the general fund. We looked at that, our team agrees with that recommendation that, that Mayor Wires has presented to us. I'll certainly turn it over to the mayor, but we would support, and we would just really, just, it's just, it's such a minor amount. We can, within our fund balance, absorb that without having to make any other program cuts or changes in the proposed budget. And so with that, Mayor, if you have some comments, be glad to turn it over to you.
Thank you, and I'll, I'll keep them very short. Very, very lengthy conversation two days ago. And when I got home, I started thinking about that. And one of the things that, that we deal with as a city every year is trying to stay in the, in the area where we can compete with other cities. When Mr. Phelps and I talked, one of the concerns that I had is, you know, can we do that? You know, are we in arrears, or if we don't give the additional raises, that next year is gonna put us behind? And they, they got together and did a lot of thinking and said, you know what? This'll, this'll keep us where we need to be. So that doesn't mean we're not gonna be competing with other cities next year, we will. And other cities very likely will take what we done, add it to their budget, and probably force us to make adjustments again next year. But I think it's a good compromise, and I would hope that all you would support that.
Well, Mayor, so what I think we would look for, you don't have to do it right this moment, but certainly it would be, it would be great to get feedback from the council. And then obviously, when we come back to present the revised budget with the different changes that have been, that we've, you know, been recommended to us, we would certainly include that revised number if that indeed is the consensus of the council.
All right, and is there a discussion right now that needs to happen, Mr.?
I would just, I, I, I like the idea of increasing the cost of living adjustment up to one and a half. I think that's a great way to make sure our employees stay up with inflation with the additional one and a half for, that is available as well. So I, I agree with that concept, and I would provide my consensus for it.
Couple of things, I want to thank Councilmember Tomachoff for bringing the issue forward. But I also want to thank Mayor Wires for following up with staff on the concept and being creative, coming up with a solution that we can afford, that satisfies our initial concern and that gives the, the employees just a little bit more and makes Glendale just a little bit more competitive. So thank you, Mayor Wires, for your follow-up work on this issue.
Mr. Hugh.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with my fellow council members, what's been said, and if you're looking for consensus, this is something I can support. Thank you.
Come in. Is your mic on? We can't hear you.
Well, you're probably happy about that. I'm glad council took the, or management took the comments of Council of Heart regarding the cost of living increase. I don't understand why they chose one point five instead of one point three, which is what the actual number is. Seems to me that would have made more sense, and then put more, put the other portion of it over into the, the merit pay side of it. If we're limiting merit pay for rank-and-file employees to one point five percent, then I would like to make sure that we're limiting management-level employees to the same level of, same percentage of merit pay for their, for their future compensation for the next year. Thank you.
Apparently, we do have consensus to go ahead and move forward. If there's no other comments, we'll go ahead and move on.
Mayor, members of the council, I'll turn over the presentation to Ms. Lindsay.
Mayor, members of the council, as Ms. Camacho mentioned earlier, this is our seventh budget workshop. The departments that will be presenting their operating budgets today for fiscal year twenty-two are the City Attorney's Office, the Police Department, Development Services, Economic Development, Public Facilities, Recreation, and Special Events, the Mayor and Council Offices, the Fire Department, Organizational Performance, the Audit Department, Water Services, and Public Affairs. This next slide has not changed since you saw it in the workshop this past Tuesday. This is the summary of the personnel changes. We currently have thirty-eight point five positions being added to the budget. Twenty-two point five of those are in the general fund. Three of those are in the internal service funds. The enterprise funds actually have a negative one impact because three of those positions have moved from water services out of the water fund into the general fund. Special revenue funds have fourteen positions being added for the total of thirty-eight point five. This next slide is the fiscal year twenty-two operating budget by fund. Same, this is the same slide that you saw Tuesday as well, this slide has not changed. The general fund is two hundred and thirty-eight point two million, or approximately forty-five, forty-nine percent of the budget. The next largest portion of the budget is enterprise funds at eighty-eight point eight million, special revenue funds at eighty-two point nine million, internal service funds at seventy-four million, and the vehicle replacement fund at three point eight million. And this next slide is the fiscal year twenty-two general fund operating budget by function. The largest component is police services at a hundred and six million, or forty-four percent, fire services at fifty-one point eight million, and public facilities, recreation, and special events is fifteen point five million, non-departmental eleven million, public works-related departments at ten point eight million, and the rest of the smaller departments fall into the other category at forty-three point one million. This is the schedule for the presentations today. As I mentioned earlier, the City Attorney's Office, Police Department, Development Services, Economic Development, Public Facilities, Recreation, Special Events, Mayor and Council Offices, Fire Department, Organizational Performance, Audit, Water Services, and Public Affairs. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bailey for the City Attorney's Office.
Morning, Mayor and Council. As you see on the slide, we are a department of twenty-eight FTEs. That's broken down with nine FTEs in the civil side, two of those are currently vacant. We have one police legal advisor, and we have eighteen in the prosecutor's office. Notably this year, there are no requested changes or requested supplementals to the budget. Clearly, it's, it, it's been an anomaly this year with regard to the coronavirus. And so as we move forward with the goals and objectives, because of it being an anomaly, I'm going to take you down a little different path this year in terms of my presentation, maybe a little longer than usual. So I'll go beyond my thirty seconds. Regarding the, the goals and objectives, again, this was an anomaly, and we focused as a department on maintaining quality of service and, and the growth of human capital. And noting that on our civil side, we are a support function. And noting that on our civil side, we are a support function. We support the operations of the departments, and, and this is where I want to thank all the operational departments for that opportunity to serve them. And also congratulations to all those departments on accomplishing a lot of things during a very difficult year. Additionally, with regards to the civil side and the human capital element, is we've had a very positive year. And it runs in the context of seeing at times the affirmation of your self-perception, meaning I may think an employee is great, but the greatest compliment to me is actually when somebody else thinks that they are great. And so noting that, it goes without saying, congratulations to Judge DiPiazza. He was our police legal advisor. He is now the presiding superior court, or the presiding judge of the city. Also, congratulations to Kurt Christensen. Kurt was, I would like to say, born and raised as an attorney with the city, and he has now been appointed the city attorney for the city of Sedona. So it is a testament, I think, to the city and the work that we do, that not only are we providing quality service, but other people are thinking that as well, and they're getting promoted. Noting that as well, we've had some internal promotions with Kirsten King, who's our new police legal advisor, and Nancy Mangone, who's now a deputy city attorney. I noted at the start of my presentation that there are two vacancies. We continue to try and fill those, notably with those vacancies, and the challenges that we've been faced with in the COVID situation, that I want to thank and commend all those in my civil side. Thank you very much for your hard work. They have taken on additional responsibilities. And I recognize that. I appreciate your hard work, your grit, and your perseverance. That's not usually shown in a data set. That's usually shown in behavioral elements. And so I want to make sure that they understand that I've seen that, and that the council knows that that's what's occurred. Regarding the prosecutor's office, the prosecutor's office does not dictate operations. We're, once again, are a support function of the court and also that of the police department. And in light of the changes that occurred, including most importantly, the fact that court hearings were done remotely, I have to give thanks out to the city prosecutor's office. We managed that nimbly. We made the changes, and we didn't miss any of the hearings, nor did we require any extensions. And thanks goes out to the ID, IT department because of their assistance with that. Within weeks, we had to shift from actually in-person appearances to online appearances, Zoom appearances, and so there was a need to ramp up with technology. And so thanks to the IT department in that regard as well. Again, thanks to the prosecutors. We actually had two situations where we were in a quarantine scenario with the prosecutor's office, and noting that with those two different scenarios at two different times, we never ceased operations, nor did we decrease our quality of service. And so we were continually operational during a very difficult year. And then last but not least, thank you to the council. We missed the trailer. We missed the memories of the trailer. But we are now in a new building, the signed building. So thank you. From city management down, the employers are very happy. Special thanks to Michelle Witenco's department for the work they did. I'm going to name Michael Johnson. He was the project manager and did a wonderful job in helping us make that transition. But again, thanks to the council. This would not have happened if you would not have put forth the money that would allow this to happen. And again, thanks for the prosecutor's office for their hard work. And I have to throw out a special thanks to Ryan Glover. Most of you do not know him. You wouldn't see him. He is the city prosecutor. Went through all the challenges with COVID, with regards to navigating the challenges in a quarantine period, with moving an office, and with turnover of various levels. He navigated and led that department. And so I'd be the first to tell you in my book, he was probably the employee of the year in my department. With that, I'm available for questions.
You're none. Thank you. I was expecting you to thank the Academy next.
Our next presentation is the Police Department, and Mr. St. John will be presenting their budget.
Mayor and Council, good morning. I'm here to present the Police Department budget with Chief Briggs. So we'll just start working through the slides. Very familiar, the, the layout of the Police Department broken down into two divisions, operations, investigative and administrative services bureaus. And then there are three divisions. I'm sorry, I should have said bureaus. There's three divisions under each of those bureaus. Operations has the foothills and gateway patrol divisions, as well as support services. And then investigative administrative has criminal investigations, administrative services, and special operations. Our operating budget is right around 10 million. The bulk of our budget is in salaries, obviously. And of that 10 million, most of that money is earmarked for things like software maintenance and shop and fuel charges, things of that nature. So the contingency funding in the Police Department is, is really very low. And what Chief Briggs and his team try to do as they manage the budget through the year is move that contingency money around. So if there's a new software that comes out, or some efficiency that can be created, they look for ways within their operating budget to pay for that. And they're usually very successful in doing that. And you're going to see a couple of supplements this year that are necessary improvements to certain systems that just simply could not be funded within the existing operating budget. Talking-
John, before you move on, it's on. I just need, I'm too far from it. Does the salary, 90 million or almost 91 million in salary, does that include the PSPRS contribution?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, it does.
Okay, thank you.
So looking at some performance over the last year, as Mr. Bailey stated, it was an anomaly year. Little strange things happened nationally, as well as here in the state, and of course, our city. You can see from the slide that's up that violent crime is on the increase across the nation. It is not an anomaly that's significant, or that's specific to the city of Glendale or the state of Arizona. Nationally, we're seeing violent crime on the rise. We went from 857 events of violent crime in calendar year '19. And I point out calendar year because we do universal crime reporting through the FBI, and they report on a calendar year. And so these numbers are actuals for calendar year '19 and calendar year '20. And then a pretty rough estimate because of the length of time for calendar year '21. So we're really just looking at first, first quarter numbers for '21 right now, and then projecting through the rest of the year. But we went from 857 violent crimes in calendar year '19 to 1,123 in calendar year '20, which is a 31% increase. Driving violent crime are ag assaults. People are just becoming more violent. And we have three gun violence detectives in our Criminal Investigations Division that spend every waking moment of their time investigating those types of crimes and trying to put those people behind bars for the crimes they're committing. On the plus side, property crime is decreasing nationally. So in the same calendar year '19 to '20, we saw 8,125 in calendar year '19, dropped to just over 7,000 in calendar year '20. So that's a pretty significant decrease in property crime, and we're seeing that trend. We've seen that trend over the last couple of years. We hope to continue to see that trend as we've stood up some programs within the Police Department, like the Real-Time Crime Center, that assist us in capturing people that are committing these crimes. And we believe those numbers will continue to drop in calendar year '21 significantly. We're projecting a 26% decrease in property crime this year. And that's, in my opinion, that's very good news.
Mr. St. John, do you have a, by any chance, a percentage of what that 31% increase, how much of that was domestic violence? I know I, you know, a lot of reports that I've read, especially because of the pandemic and people being basically isolated within their family unit, there's been a big increase in domestic violence. Do we know, is, is that a, a big factor in that number, do you think?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, I will defer to Chief Briggs. I don't believe we have that number with us here today. We can certainly get that number. Anecdotally, I would tell you that domestic violence probably isn't what's driving the aggravated assaults. It, it is, I'm sure there is a, a percentage increase in domestic violence aggravated assaults, but I don't think it's, it's a big percentage of that 31%.
Thank you. Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, we've been monitoring a lot of calls, a lot of different calls throughout the year because of COVID. DV was one of them. And what we saw is we saw DV calls increasing a little bit, but the offense reports were decreasing. So there weren't arrests being made. Now we're seeing, now that we're starting to open up, the arrests are starting to happen. I can't tell you why that is. Most DV calls are not violent crime. They're assaults. They're not aggravated assaults. But we are seeing an increase now with domestic violence arrests. We didn't see it then. I'd also like to say that about a year ago, council received a memo from me about we were over-reporting vehicle thefts. But also in that memo, we were under-reporting aggravated assaults because of the way our RMS was set up. So some of this increase, and I can't tell you what it is, what the number is, is because we were under-reporting ag assaults. We are now reporting them correctly.
And I just want to be clear, so not necessarily a higher number, it's just corrected the way it's reported?
Yes, except we, we do know that there's a trend of increased violence this year throughout the country and the state. So we do have an increase in violent crime, but the increase that we're seeing also includes us reporting it correctly. But I do believe there's an increase in violent crime.
But you don't know what that percentage actually is?
No, I have no way of going back because of the way the system was set up.
Thank you.
Mayor? Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Briggs, how, how did you arrive at your estimates for 2021, where you project, for example, violent crime will go from 1,123, and your estimate is 779? How could you possibly arrive at that estimate?
So I have a brilliant research person who uses special spreadsheets that does this. I asked the same question, Mayor, Councilmember Clark. I did ask the same question, and it's a spreadsheet that they use that, it's a predictive spreadsheet. And she says that these numbers are correct based on previous years, as you predict out.
Because it's, it's even lower than 2019, which was 857. I, I appreciate the predictive nature of this, but I see the glass that's half-empty, and I'm not buying into that number. But thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
So next, we'll move on to our response times. And response times are calculated based on the percentage for priority one and priority two that we arrive in five minutes or less. What percent of priority one calls and priority two calls that we do arrive five minutes or less. Our target is 90% for priority one. In fiscal year '19, we were at 71.3%. In fiscal year '20, we jumped to 80.6%. And we are projecting in fiscal '21 another slight increase to 83.2%. Now, I'll tell you that priority one calls for service are about 2,000 a year on average. So these are in-progress violent crimes, and our response to these are probably of the utmost importance. Priority two, on the other hand, include a wide variety of types of calls, including audible alarms from businesses, which we get a lot of, particularly on stormy days. And during those stormy days, we do reprioritize audible alarms to a priority three. But through the majority of the year, they are a priority two. They represent roughly 32,000 to 33,000 calls per year are priority two. And as you can see, we have some work to do still on our response to priority twos. And we are working with the Cloud Innovation Center through ASU on a, on a patrol deployment model right now to try to really maximize the efficiency of our officers in the field and their response to priority one and priority two calls for service. The bottom of the slide, you can see communications, the percent of calls that are answered in 10 seconds or less. You can see that in FY '21, we're estimating 96.4%, which is astounding. And then for calls that are dispatched in 60 seconds or less, we're just under 90%, which is incredible, given the type of work that they do in the communication center and the staffing levels that they have today. So very proud of those numbers.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Either of you can answer this. I know that the response time for priority one is five minutes or less. What is the average response time for lesser important calls, twos, threes, fours?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, I've got those numbers in front of me. So for priority twos, our average response time is 6 minutes and 37 seconds, which is a 10-second decrease from last fiscal year. So we've gotten a little bit better on our priority twos. Priority three calls for service are right at 20 minutes. And that is about two minutes better than we were last fiscal year. And priority four calls for service are at 1429, which is a little less, about 45 seconds better than we were last year.
Mayor, if I could ask another. I'm curious, you've got a better response time for priority fours than threes. Why?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, I'll ask the chief to help me answer this, but I believe some of it has to do with the fact that priority fours are sometimes taken by people that are on administrative duty. So they're on modified duty because of an injury or something else going on in their lives, that they can't perform the normal functions. And so they're taking those calls by phone, and they're available to take them fairly quickly, which helps to pull that number down. Priority three calls for service are dispatched through the tablet that are in the officer's vehicles, and they're only taken by officers in the field. They're not taken by anybody in an administrative assignment.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Mayor, thank you. I have a question on the, on the offer initiate, officer-initiated call volume. I don't know what that means. And then there's, you're projecting a pretty substantial decrease in traffic stops. So just would like to have that, that explained also.
So offer, officer, I'm sorry, Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff. Officer-initiated calls are when an officer sees a crime in progress, or is going out with somebody in the park, or in a, in a business location to do an FBI filled interrogation card. And then you have traffic stops, which are separate, self-initiated activity. We are projecting the decrease because again, this, when you're doing predictive analysis like this, with things that have variables that we don't control, many times, we don't just go from 1920 to next year. We, we use a lot of years previous. So we are projecting a decrease in traffic stops. However, I think you will see an increase. This year, because of COVID, especially in the height of COVID throughout the state, but also within the Police Department, we did ask our officers to only make traffic stops on dangerous situations. So high rates of speed, but not on administrative stuff. So we did see a decrease this year because of that. We're now back full, full at it, and I believe that the number that you're seeing there, the predicted number, will be much higher because of some of the initiatives that we're doing with traffic stops to not just fight crime, but also reduce traffic, traffic accidents.
Okay, I've noticed just myself, it seems like a lot more red light running, happening. I don't know if you're seeing more stops for that, but, and that is, I think, probably one of the most dangerous things that people do, is, I mean, those are violent collisions when somebody runs a red light. So I was just surprised to see, I thought maybe distracted, the distracted driving law or something had some effect on maybe, you know, fewer violations. So just curious. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I think traffic stops are very, very important in terms of just overall crime prevention. People who often have expired tags, or don't have insurance, or whatever, usually, although not always, there will be other issues associated with that person. And, and I think that prevents a certain amount of crime occurring in the community. There seems to be a move away from valuing the importance of traffic stops. Can, can you speak to the current philosophy regarding that issue?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Clark. I do agree with you that traffic stops are important. I think traffic stops not only reduce traffic driving conditions by our presence, but it's also been proven to reduce crimes in the areas that we are making traffic stops. We have four areas right now where we're using traffic stops to reduce crime. They've been very successful. Our traffic stops are up, and it's not just at the traffic bureau's level, but patrol is very much involved in this. is very much involved in this. For a very long period of time, probably 10 years ago, patrol officers stopped getting training in radar. So what we've been doing is getting more radars in the hands of our patrol officers so in their downtime, their proactive time, they're able to assist with traffic, whereas before it was just visual. They didn't have the tools because they didn't have the training. They now have that. You can ask any one of my officers, traffic stops is a priority in the police department, and it's not just for the traffic, it's also the reduction of crime. They do go hand in hand.
I'll skip a couple of slides and move into accomplishment. The big accomplishment for the year, of course, with COVID was the health and safety of our workforce as they were out responding to calls and doing their job out in the field. Many were able to telecommute. Obviously, first responders weren't able to do that. They were out in the field doing their work and responded to just under 180,000 calls for service during the year of COVID. Moving on to our supplementals, we do have several FTE supplementals that were brought forward this year. The first is three new communication specialist positions. As we've discussed, communications is an area where it's difficult to attract and retain employees, and part of that is because of the amount of work that they do and the fact that we had forced overtime for many years in that division. We've gotten rid of the forced overtime, we've adjusted their schedules, and we're now implementing a smart growth model so that the people that work in that area have a reasonable workload and don't feel, won't experience the burnout that they are experiencing or have experienced in the past. And again, this is not Glendale-specific. Communication centers across the nation are experiencing similar difficulties with attracting and retaining good people. And so we hope to be able to fill these positions this year and provide that support to the existing staff. The next position is the Public Safety Media Relations position. That was an underfilled sergeant's position last year. It was a pilot program. It has worked very well for the police department. Chief Briggs has a lot of positive to say about the work that's been done by that employee in coordination with his Public Information Office in really keeping Glendale out of the negative press that we had seen for about a year and a half, two years prior, particularly from one news station. And this past year, we have had several incidents that were newsworthy, but we did not make headline news. And that was in large part due to the work of this employee. And so we're asking this year to bring him on as a full-time employee in his own position within the police department. He'll have some supervisory responsibilities within the police department and some reporting responsibilities to the city manager's office, as well as some oversight of the Public Information Office out of the fire department. The next position is a person crimes detective. This person will work in the violent crimes unit, will focus primarily on misdemeanor person crimes. So those are primarily assaults, but will also include violations of court orders that are non-domestic violence in nature, so injunctions against harassment primarily. And there are a great number of cases for this detective to work in the hopes that we keep something from going from a violation of an order to an aggravated assault, something that requires a greater level of attention. And then the last FTE is vehicular crimes. Another national trend that we've seen this last year, our fatalities are through the roof nationally, and in Glendale, we've seen the same trend. Typically, we average neighborhood mid-20 fatalities per year, 24 to 26, I'd say. This past year, we had 42, which is a staggeringly large number. And we know the cost of a single fatality on a community. Studies have been done to demonstrate that the cost to a community for a single fatality is, could be calculated at over $1 million. So when you consider that we had 42 fatalities this past year, it is kind of a staggering number, and the workload for those detectives in that area, they need help. And so we're bringing this FTE forward this year. On the information, innovation, and technology side of the House, RFID Evidence Management System will help us better track evidence as it comes into property and evidence, gets moved through the different areas of property and evidence for processing of all kinds of different things. So we need to better track how those pieces of evidence are moving through the system, and the use of technology to do that makes best sense. The next is the 911 logging system. We have a state mandate to record 911 calls and retain those as evidence when needed, but we also have to retain all 911 calls. The system that we have today is somewhat archaic. We have seen some failures in the system, nothing that's caused any damage to any cases. But to avoid that potential, this past year, we did a lot of research into what other solutions existed, and in working with IT, developed this 911 logging solutions system, and we're ready to implement if council approves the budget item. The next is a digital forensic storage solution. Being a little sensitive about this topic, there are certain types of digital evidence that you really want to keep separated from all other forms of digital evidence. So when we image someone's computer, for example, because they are committing crimes with their computer, maybe crimes against children, we don't want to store that evidence with all the other digital evidence that we have. It's not a best practice. And so this solution allows for us to separate that type of evidence from all other evidence, strictly maintain it within the police department and IT. So a lot of our evidence goes to the cloud. This evidence can't go to the cloud. We have to maintain it on our own servers and protect from others being able to access that evidence. And so this solution allows us to do that. And then the last are the, we're in the last year of replacing mobile data computers, and this last supplement accomplishes that for our police department. The drone program that we've talked about in the CIP, the training in O&M is part of the general fund at $18,000. We have a couple of growth vehicles that we've talked about in the CIP. Those vehicles need to be outfitted with cages and lights and all the equipment necessary within a police vehicle, so the nearly 33,000 covers that for the three vehicles. And then in the Vehicle Replacement Fund, we're asking for two investigations vehicles, essentially, one for the persons crimes detective I talked about earlier, and one for vehicular crimes. You can see the VCU detective's vehicle is more expensive, and it's because of the nature and type of equipment that that detective would need to bring with them to the crime scenes, and so they have a different style of vehicle. And with that, Chief Briggs and I are available for any questions.
Questions? Only question I have on the, the final year of the additional mobile data computers, that's the laptops that the officers use. Are we going to have to start next year all over again? Because that's about a three-year process, isn't it?
Mayor, it is the end of this purchase cycle, and I think we're looking at four or five years before we have to start looking at it again in the IT.
It'll actually last that long?
Yes.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you. So let's go ahead and move on to Development Services.
Our next presentation is Development Services, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Meta.
Good morning, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm delighted to be here today, but even more delighted with the fact that I have returned to Glendale. I had a nine-year stint some years ago, and in my 33 years of public sector service, this is the only one that I always wished to return to, and here I am. So for that, thank you, Mr. Phelps, for the opportunity. I'm also joined here to my left with George Pavlovic. He's our building official. And as you will see through some of the slides, if there's some remarkable work that this community has seen, it has a whole lot to do in terms of development with George's work. He started off as the structural engineer, the reviewer here, and then went on to become the building official. And under his leadership, his guidance, his team has done some phenomenal work. You will see some of the evidence as I walk you through some of these slides here. But quite honestly, he's also to my side because he's familiar with the hundreds, possibly thousands, of permits that have been issued recently. And if you've got those tough questions, he's the right guy.
Thank you.
So Development Services, we have two significant divisions within that, Building Safety and Planning. There are three goals embedded within our mission statement. Service to our customers, those who are making property or land use changes, ensuring safe structures and definitely the occupants within those. And then thirdly, to preserve a strong community. And what that means is also not just those who are proposing to build or change, but those who might be impacted by the proposed changes. Our budget is people-centric, with most of it dedicated to our staffing needs. I have two slides that would relate to performance measures. This first one before you pertains to the Planning Division. Planning is the first stop in a series of contacts that the public has with the city if there's any physical alteration of a site or a proposed change of use on a property. And contrary to general expectation of the economy slowing down due to the pandemic, the pace of land development has not missed a beat. In fact, in some sectors of our local economy, I think the pace has accelerated. Planners have fielded more service requests, and they've handled more phone calls year over year, and that's evident in this slide. In part, volume of service requests and staff's caseloads went up as we adapted the electronic submittal model. So with the pandemic, very quickly, this division, this department, went over to the electronic submittals. There were no walk-ins. And in a roundabout way, what we realized is that this was actually enhanced customer service in many ways, and we've obviously perfected it since it started about this time last year. Whether an applicant is coming in for a necessary structure or the applicant is representing the builder of a 1.2 million square foot industrial building, it all comes down to this place where we have to interact with the customers. Our interaction with the resident or an applicant has grown threefold in two years. This too is evident in some of the statistics before you. So this 24/7 submittal process that we've opened up is the enhanced customer service that we have landed on. The next slide, this relates to the Building Safety section. This is the division that is most affected by the surge in development activity. Their work generally picks up after the planners have done their design review process. And the division's reviews and recommendations are guided by multitude of building codes. Regardless of the ever-increasing workload, their primary mission is still the same. It's about safety of the structures and the occupants. Every work area within Building Safety experienced unprecedented workload. This includes service representatives who interact with the applicants. It includes the plan reviewers, who include architects and structural engineers. And then you have the inspectors who are out in the field. There are two types of challenges associated with this new development trend that we are now seeing. Quantity or volume is one, but the other one is scope, scope of work. On the quantity of work, that's illustrated on this slide. We are passing more building permits than ever before. If there was a slight dip in the permit activity in fiscal year 20 about this time last year, we more than made up for it in 2021. Judging by the number of cases in the entitlement pipeline that we have and in our meetings with prospective developers, there is no slowing down in the building activity in the short, medium, and some say even in the long term. Now, long term means different things to different folks. In the planning world, long term is like 20 years. In the building safety world, that could be in the five to 10-year timeframe, and we don't see any end in sight in terms of that long term. The scope of work, which is the other phenomenon I need to bring your attention to, this is also what I would define as complexity. It's an interesting phenomenon that's only been noted in these past couple of years, and that's not apparent in the statistics that are before you here. Some of the projects we are now reviewing or inspecting and approving are not only larger than what we would normally see, but they are way more complex and more sophisticated in terms of whether it's the mechanical issues, electrical, or the safety systems. These reviews take longer, and the inspectors, too, are on each of their sites for way longer than they used to be. Some of the larger and more complex developments, especially those in the Loop 303 area, and also the ones that are competing for tenants from other competitive markets. The term "speed to market," which we've heard quite often now, is a term these developers are expecting us, from us. We are doing our best with what we have, and in some cases, there's some overtime involved as well. It is in this side of the House that we need more staff. I'm going to shift to the section of accomplishments, and there's a lot of information here as well.
James, Chief?
Yes.
Should they go to accomplishments? On page 29, under percent of submitted plans requiring three or more reviews. I am troubled. 3% of these numbers, if you have 3,800 and some plan reviews completed, 3% of that is somewhere in the neighborhood of 100 that had to go through three or more reviews. Correct me if my assumption is wrong, but my assumption is, is that we are failing to communicate adequately during Plan Review One and Two what the deficiencies are, thereby requiring an even third plan review. And the one thing that we almost, we must always be cognizant of within the development community is time is money. So every time there's a plan review, a third or a fourth, that's time and money that could have been utilized elsewhere by the development community. So could you talk about this whole issue? And it stays constant, and it isn't until '22 that you have a target of reducing it by 1%. Is there any emphasis on, within your department, on making a concerted effort to reduce the additional plan reviews?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, speaking of concerted effort, I think this would be a conservative number that we are showing you because there is a lot of effort to actually approve and encourage the applicant to go forward at the end of the second review with a conditional approval. Had it been left to the devices of, well, did they actually do the work and show us a correction? We expect a lot of that to be done in the field and make sure that the project moves forward at a good pace. It's unfortunate, but many times it's not necessarily at the end of the staff as much as it is at the end of the applicant. They could have a change in their own staffing, they did not respond to the corrections that were identified in the red lines by staff previously, many good reasons. But I can assure you, the whole impetus or the practice that we have is not to hold them back for minor issues, but to provide conditional approval and with an understanding that- that we will definitely check these issues out in the field. So what you're seeing is our best practice of what we can do. Within the first two submittals, there are just those that fail to correct the issues. And if it's a life and safety issue, then definitely we would hold it back. If it isn't, if it's more perfunctory or just an aesthetic element, then we let it go and move forward.
Mayor, a follow-up question. So, am I to understand that basically, I get it if it's a minor issue, you're going to go ahead and issue the conditional use permit and look for correction as they go through the process. But are you basically saying that this 3% figure is made up primarily of applicants who fail to do their responsibilities with regard to Plan Review?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, generally, yes. It is on the applicant's side to come back with the corrections that have been identified for them. They might have failed to use the right code. They might have just failed to identify things that we were expecting them to follow after the second review. And from my practice in the other communities, I don't think this is an alarming number. In fact, I would suggest that the practice here in Glendale is more forgiving and gracious, encouraging folks to move forward with their projects with the hope that we'll be able to definitely make those improvements or corrections in the field.
Mayor, one more follow-up question. Is this 3% comprised mainly of individuals who may be unsophisticated with the development process? Or is this 3% the majority of major development projects?
Yes, Councilmember Clark, let me ask George here to see if he can help out with that.
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, majority of these, it's really hard to identify percentage of these 3%, how many of them are, let's say, the individual residents that are submitting small residential projects versus the registrants. We really try to help the citizens for small residential projects to do everything we can for them to get approved because we have better control of the drawings on our side. We know the codes better than them and everything. We assist. However, when the registrants are included, we are not allowed to make any changes. They have to make changes. So if they fail to do that, we cannot do that for them. So I would say the bigger percentage of these that goes into three and pass reviews are the, I would say, commercial projects and everything that requires registrants.
Thank you.
Oh.
You know, I can tell you through my experience, it seemed like a couple hundred years ago, I used to do a lot of construction work. What we experienced with the companies that I worked with is frequently there were design changes right just out of the blue. Maybe the architect would come out not like what he drew and he'd want to change it. And I'm certain that that type of thing happens a lot where people actually see it as it's going up going, yeah, I decided I don't like that. And that requires a whole nother review and approval. So to me, I think 3% is awesome. I mean, that sounds really good to me. When you look at the grand scheme of things, the sheer number that we're doing, I think it's pretty impressive. And I haven't, you know, we get a lot of calls in our office. No, I'm going to refrain from saying a lot of calls. Occasionally, we get calls in my office from owners or property developers that are unhappy with something that happened in the process. And I can tell you virtually 100% of the time when they're complaining about something not getting approved or a holdback, it almost always has fallen back on the contractor telling the owner one thing and doing something different, 100% of the time. So contractors are busy right now. They're doing the best they can. But I think you guys are doing an awesome job.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. So under accomplishments, some of you are on the ad hoc committees engaged in the rewriting of certain sections of the city code. We are now only months away from seeking formal input from stakeholders and residents. In fact, we've started engaging the Planning Commission at an informal level at this point and hope to wrap up the unified development code with this council later in the summer. In terms of annexations, council's actions to date this year have added five annexations that equates to over two square miles. Added to the corporate limits, we are now of a city physically 65.02 square miles. Staff is processing three more properties for annexation right now. Some of it might be already scheduled for your this month and next month's meetings. We believe there will be several more applications coming in in the next couple fiscal years as well. So as with most of these annexations, it is quickly followed with the developer's project to build large and often very complex structures on these properties. And we need to be ready for that. In October 2019, so 18 months ago, there were no industrial or warehouse structures in the Loop 303 corridor. This year, we have 5.5 million square feet of new construction. The construction value that was estimated at the time these projects went forward was $380 million. There are many similar projects in design review and in the pipeline. Then there are many square miles of developable land which are ripe for development of this type. As for the month of March, we are reviewing approximately 9 million square feet of industrial and warehouse buildings right now. To put it in perspective, that's the equivalent of having a rooftop coverage of eight significant malls like the Arrowhead Mall. That's all happening concurrently right now in various stages of design. In addition to raising our staffing needs, we'd like to focus also on shifting to a more robust and efficient permitting software system. Now that we are accepting virtually 100% electronic submittals from development applicants, we are also shifting to a more versatile design review process that is common between all our reviewing agencies within the city. And with these electronic portals, we are also having an outward-facing module that will provide information to keep our clients and our applicants informed about their projects on a 24-hour basis. So they don't need to be only making contact with us eight to five. They can submit anything at any time, and they can review our responses at any time. Some of the notable developments where we've moved forward, and you might be very familiar with some of these major projects, these represent an expansion of a very diverse economic and employment base that ranges from whether it is beverages, distilling, canning, packaging, luxury car dealerships, medical facilities, hotels, and an assortment of residential properties. As of March, there are 2,700 new multifamily units in varying stages of development. But it's either in design review or construction drawings permitted to be built but not occupied as yet. 2,700 are in the pipeline. In terms of residential subdivision lots, there are 1,700 lots that are being permitted in these next few years based on 24 subdivisions that have been approved very recently. So you can imagine the workload coming up to us. Some additional brand names that you'll be very familiar with, these two represent diversity in our employment industry. These names and several others, if you put them together, amount to 1.4 million square feet of commercial buildings in some stage of development right now, whether it's in the design review process or actually in the field being constructed. Once again, the diversity in the industry, that also requires us to be well-versed and have the right number of folks in the field to be able to deal with this demand. Here's a remarkable factoid that might be of some interest to illustrate how one industrial building constructed and certified for occupancy. From the moment their plans were submitted to the Office of Building Safety to the time when they were issued a certificate of occupancy, it was nine months. It's remarkable. These are one of those very large structures, 900,000 square feet. It had to be done in the nick of time. It had to be done before they could bring in very sophisticated equipment to go in. The reason why I would even bring this up as one anecdotal example is that these are the kinds of demands that require our staff to be there, present, sometimes on a 24-hour basis. And when we dedicate our few resources that we have to such major projects, we also have to keep track of all the other projects that are going on in the city at the same time on this side of the track. And that's where we have our challenge and therefore the additional need for staffing.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
If I may, Jim Sheed. You referenced speed to market a little bit ago. And typically, we think of that as like the timeframe between either plant submission or sometimes, as I call it, from groundbreaking to ribbon cutting. But in the 303 area, a lot of that speed to market is involved in the annexation process as well. Do you have a sense of generally how long it takes for us to process an annexation?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Buck Turner, annexations are something that is initially handled through the Planning Division. Before it comes to you, it comes in varying phases. There are aspects associated with it which might have a development agreement associated with it. In some cases, we don't have that. So it all depends. On average, I would say anything between three months or so. Some of it is statutorily required. There's a blank petition aspect of it. There's a 30-day waiting period. There is notification. There's a public hearing. If we dot all the i's, cross the t's, then it's roughly in the three-month timeframe that it could typically come forward. Complications can also be there depending on what entitlements they had before from the county, whether we are recognizing that wholesale or do we decide to parse it a little bit and change it around? So that might add additional time. Did that answer the question? I'm sorry.
So Vice Mayor and Mr. Medif, I understand. So three months is probably the quickest we could accomplish one due to, you know, the statutory requirements and our calendar and that sort of thing. But if somebody had a piece of land that maybe we could say more than likely within six months, you would, in the three to six-month range, would that be feasible?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Turner, I would say three months is the low end of the average, and it could be a little bit higher depending on the complications.
Okay, thank you.
One thing that the pandemic did not affect was the development of large projects, as we've seen. But there were several small residential projects like room expansions, patio extensions, things like that. And they were delayed for several reasons through this pandemic, whether it was not able to find a contractor, not able to get the financing, labor's not available, whatever those reasons are. But these were unprecedented and unpredictable times. What staff has done, especially in Mr. Pavlovic's area, is staff has worked with these individual developers or property owners and assisted them in reinstating their permits. If you may or may not know, but a permit has a 180-day lifespan. You have to have at least one inspection approved and passed in that six months. But if they haven't asked for that inspection because there hasn't been any progress, it's unfair for us to then say, okay, now you have to reinstate your permit with a fee. So we are helping them through at this point in time. And what that also means is that several of these projects that could not go forward are now coming into play, and that too will be an expected workload increase. So Mayor and members of the council, our ask for this year is five FTEs. Each of these are within the Building Safety Division. The demand for our services is higher than before, and we believe this is a new normal. It is not a peak. This is where it's going to be. It's likely going to even go higher. The administrative support assistant, a new FTE, given the higher volume of work, there is more contact with contractors, more utility clearances, more public record requests, and more inspection scheduling. That's the job. The Development Services Representative, another new FTE, the Development Service Center, the DSC as we call it, is the central hub for almost everything that's associated with development. That's collecting fees for not only the division's fees that are required, but the fees of several other departments. It's like a one-stop interface for the public and for the applicants. They take plans ranging from solar panel installation to something as large as 1.2 million square feet of industrial. They parse it out to the divisions. They do all the coordination. But the best part is that they also check for completeness and provide a relief to the other reviewers because they can handle small projects, whether it's solar panels or swimming pools or gas line services and things like that. So it helps the process move much faster. In terms of collections, which we have centralized over here as far as development goes, whatever was collected in the previous fiscal year, we think we will exceed double that before the end of this year in terms of fees, whether it's diff fees, review fees, permit fees, barricade fees, all those put together. We are requesting two residential building inspectors. Our existing three residential inspectors are handling 19,000 inspections in a 12-month period. Sometimes they are assisted by one or two other inspectors who might, who maybe George would be able to assign briefly because there's a backlog happening. But that averages between 20 to 25 inspections per inspector per day, which is way too high. And given the number of lots that have been recently platted, plus the new types of villas and bungalows that are getting very popular here in the valley, this demand for inspection will increase even further.
Yeah. I would imagine that Stonehaven has a lot to do with that with the anticipation of over 1,365 homes in that one project alone. But I am curious why you are not asking for commercial building inspectors when we look at all of the work occurring, especially out by the 303. Do you feel, how many commercial inspectors do you have? And what kind of workload are they carrying? Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, you're right. Stonehaven is definitely in that very large count as well. But there are so many other additional slightly smaller subdivisions, some very small subdivisions. They're all in play at the same time. Good point. The other, the last line that I was about to mention is in fact associated with the commercial side. And I will see if George would like to add to that.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Clark, yeah, the last position there on the slide is actually commercial inspector. We just call it inspector specialist per our HR policy. Right now, we have total of six inspectors in that field, one contractor. This would be definitely great addition for us to bring one more person for that. That way, we can designate one structural inspector, one electrical inspector, one mechanical plumbing inspector to be constantly serving the 303 area because these inspections are ridiculously long sometimes. It can take two to three hours to inspect that big of a building. And we cannot let the rest of Glendale suffer because of that. So we have to serve and cover, cover all other sites there. But I believe with what we see on the screen here that it would be really a great balance of workload between residential and commercial if it gets approved, what is on the screen.
Mayor, if I could follow up. So my final question is, is one inspector specialist enough to satisfy the needs on the commercial side?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, I believe with the reassignment of jobs, the way we've planned it, and taking a gentle but phased approach towards the growth would be most prudent at this time. We know there's a lot of work out there, and we've done some remarkable work considering that in the last 18 months, we've had 5.5 million square feet added in the 303 area. And we did it with the staffing we had, knowing that there is going to be another surge. But it'll, and if it doesn't continue to rise and if it eventually sort of tapers off and stays the new known off and stays the new normal, then for this time, I think the staffing that we are requesting is, is adequate.
Mayor, one final question. And the reason I bring this up is because we will soon have Crystal Lagoons beginning their construction, I would imagine, within a month or so. That is a highly complex project, and I could see where one inspector position alone could be consumed just with Crystal Lagoons for the next 18 to 24 months. And, and then that new Inspector Specialist has been negated simply with the work that Crystal Lagoons will require. Any response to that?
Yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Clark, obviously, council's pleasure over here, but given our record of, of identifying these use, these, these types of special projects that, that do come in and require a lot of dedicated time, as we have done in the past, and there's a good track record of it, the use of some folks who come in as contract employees is how we would tend to resolve the slight peak that comes in. But for an ongoing long-term basis, I think this would be sufficient.
Mayor, then therefore, within your budget, you could absorb contracted inspectors if needed?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, you know, there's always that turnover and there's salary savings, and that's how we've managed several contract positions in the past. I don't see a change happening there.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could just add, Mayor and Councilmember Clark, that we do have temporary service dollars in the general fund to take, take care of special situations like this.
Thank you, Mayor. On this slide, the next one, we are requesting minor additions to the ongoing budget here, and I'll be glad to explain any of these if you have any questions. I would focus on just one of them. It's a technical term, Blue Beam. What is that? Blue Beam is a software package that the city has implemented. It's not just within the Development Services. Every reviewing department uses the same software. Now that we are doing things electronically, we are on the same platform. It's much more efficient. Then finally, for the three field inspectors that we are requesting, if you were to approve those, then the vehicles associated with those three positions are also identified here. That, Mayor, council members, we are to answer any additional questions you may have.
I, I don't have a question. I just wanted to make a statement. I remember, it actually seemed like a couple of years ago, and, and I think it may have been when you were here before you left, I don't know exactly, when we were talking about getting away from paper plans and going to electronic. I mean, I'm, I'm sure some of the council remembers that. It was a pretty extensive, and it was kind of scary for everybody, but we, we knew that's the direction we needed to go. Were you still here then?
You know, I've been hearing about going paperless 20 years ago, so I'm still with it, and it's, it's tough.
Well, when I'm talking about the actual plans, when, when, when they submit the plans for, for review and everything.
We had started that, but I don't think we ever had a chance of going 100%. The pandemic made it happen. We just went that way.
Yeah, I, I think that's probably been one of the best things that, that could have happened, and certainly still moving in that direction. But no, good job. You guys are doing a great job. Keep it up.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Friedman, you've got five minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I am joined by my esteemed long-term colleague, Ms. Jessie Peterson, our Assistant Director of Economic Development. In order to be expeditious, we've prepared some, some comments and reduced them further after Mr. Metta's fantastic presentation that really does highlight exactly what has been transpiring in the city. We fully recognize that the tone that the council has set through Mr. Phelps's office, through support with Mr. Bailey and the department heads that work constantly together, it has made a marketed impact in our community, and it continues to from just a perceptions point of view for our office. And so without, you know, we are an ecosystem. We are definitely one, one team that's seamless. If there's any holes in any system, it will have a ripple effect. So appreciate the work that the team has done, citywide, council on down. It has made a massive, massive impact on our community. So to start here with the slide, we work collectively to promote citywide arts, culture, and economic development activities that improve the livability of our community by facilitating the creation of high-quality jobs, serving as a critical resource for prospective businesses and current partners, while consistently exploring new industry opportunities. We seek to ensure a diverse and adaptable community economically and culturally. Our charge is to make Glendale a thriving place, to entertain residents, host visitors, and support our growing business community. Despite a very challenging year worldwide, we are grateful for the leadership shown and the significant investments made in Glendale. As a team, we work together to use the funds provided to drive our departmental goals. The operating budget is devoted to our efforts related to providing business assistance, maintaining key memberships with local, regional, and international agencies that work in tandem with our business attraction program and opportunities for retention, providing for the arts and culture programming throughout the entire city, and supporting the professional development of our high-performing team. Mayor, Council, the next three slides will cover our strategic objectives and performance measures. As a team, once again, we facilitate job creation opportunities that benefit all aspects of our city and are a reflection of the contributions made by each and every city department, whom without their expertise in internal customer service, we would not be able to offer the speed-to-market advantages that have served our community exceedingly well. Despite the difficult year felt by our business community due to the pandemic, the city continues to experience substantial growth, and we are still welcoming new companies, including small businesses that have opened over the last year. And the development boom shows no sign of slowing, chiefly in the Loop 101 and Loop 303 areas, where more speculative building inventory is coming online to welcome new enterprises to our city in the coming fiscal years, plural. Our larger industrial buildings along the 303 can play host to thousands of employees depending on the end-users who choose to make Glendale home. Estimating future fiscal year targets is an enjoyable challenge, but a challenge nonetheless given the range of employment opportunities. And so just to talk a little bit about that, we have had some prospects of late that are under non-disclosure agreement that are ranging in the multiple thousands, in the same-sized building as we would have presently that hosts 200 to 300. And so we can, we can estimate high or low, no matter what, historically for Glendale in terms of revenue and employment counts, it will continue to be significant. We've also increased our direct assistance figures over the last year, offering focused business assistance to existing companies in needed, in need, growing businesses, and property owners, linking this business to existing resources and support events and opportunities that provide a valuable lifeline. We have also increased expectations for our expanding social media communications program for every figure on the slide due to the tenure of the effort and the significant amount of business activity taking place citywide. Likewise, our targeted outreach and business assistance events we expect to recover and accelerate coming out of the pandemic. This was a unique year for the arts industry as they have had to seek ways, like all of us, to pivot for their service delivery models. We sincerely appreciate those partners that work collectively with our sole arts manager to provide valuable programming to our residents during a time when uplifting content was much needed. We believe that the integration of the arts and culture program into our community is a vital enhancement to our economic development efforts, so we are committed with council's support to increasing the amount of the arts projects and programming moving forward, and we anticipate more residents, visitors, and partners will participate and benefit from an increase in public arts and culture opportunities. And with that, I'd like to turn the balance of the presentation over to my partner, Ms. Jessie Steen Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. The next three slides provide a snapshot of our team's major accomplishments this year. We have the opportunity to impact people's lives in a significant manner, the chance to help facilitate responsive assistance to our small and large businesses alike by partnering to provide resources to our businesses due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and offering free arts and education programs citywide, both which have been really important in this time of need. The team has also facilitated the annexation of thousands of acres, as Mr. Metta had mentioned, and that has resulted in millions of square feet of new industrial and commercial development along the Loop 303, including major capital investments that have resulted in welcoming new companies, significant construction sales tax generation, and prime opportunities to welcome those new additional end-users that Mr. Friedman mentioned. Land transaction activity in the Glendale Air Park was superb, with nine new buildings underway or recently completed, and only one or two significant land opportunities remaining for the new, for new ground-up development as well. We had the pleasure of attracting and facilitating major investment to the Sports and Entertainment District, including the Crystal Lagoons Island Resort that Councilmember Clark mentioned, in Fuego, several new luxury apartment buildings and hotels which continue to fill available space in that district that also has available space to continue growing. We also worked as part of a citywide team to assist developments along the Loop 101, including additional luxury auto dealers, so joining BMW was Volvo, Land Rover, and Jaguar, as well as new popular restaurants that are a fan favorite of our residents for sure, including Portillo's, Barrio Queen, Lou Malnati's, and Matt's Big Breakfast. This next slide details our sole supplemental request this year, which will allow us to continue and accelerate our arts and culture efforts that are part of our overall department success and are funded from the Arts Fund, not the general fund. The city's public art program has been operated by a single FTE with support from temporary part-time staff help that has proven variable as contracted employees consistently find full-time positions outside the city. Over the last year, the program has not had any additional assistance as the previous temp employee took a full-time position in another city just prior to the pandemic, and we did not have the opportunity to fill that contracted position, position during this time. Having to rely on temporary part-time assistance consistently creates gaps in capacity to meet all of the demands of the Arts Division, which include the planning and execution of programming, grant management and oversight, coordination of all Arts Commission meetings and activities, project management for capital art projects, and all related administrative functions. We think it's also important to note that the figure on this slide accounts for the more than $21,000 in temp pay savings that will not be used should this supplemental be approved. Glendale has also experienced an increase in development with significant investment and interest in our city, increasing our ability to fund the CIP and with it, the arts program. With the exciting CIP projects that have recently been discussed and prioritized by council, we look forward to the opportunity to undertake more capital art projects and incorporate public art where possible, a primary intent of the arts program. This supplemental would cover the hiring of a full-time arts coordinator to support existing operational needs and the addition of more activity as we recognize our current capacity is inadequate to provide a prominent arts and culture program that is vital to our well-being. That concludes our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions, and thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I have a question. Looking at your FTE list here, I don't see the business support position listed here that was funded initially with the CARES money. I just see Arts and Culture Program Manager, Assistant Director of Economic Development, Director of Economic Development, they're all economic development, and then a Management Assistant and Arts and Culture Coordinator. I don't even see that position on here.
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachov, it, it may be listed as an Economic Development Program Manager if it says there are two of those. That is the actual title within our personnel system for that position.
So that position is going to be retained?
Yes, ma'am.
Have you found that position to be effective?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachov, we were able to hire that position in January with an existing employee, so it was, we took an employee for another department. We have been able to get training for that employee already, so the basic economic development training, as well as training on some of our internal systems. And so, yes, we are up and running with that employee to start doing some of that outreach that we agreed to, as well as some of those internal operations, to start engaging with our business community specifically, so that is taking place.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. This department is small but mighty. When you consider that economic development is the lifeblood of the city because it attracts and generates new revenue that can be used for other things that benefit our residents. And I am amazed and sometimes perplexed that you manage to do all that you do with only 10 people when there are departments that are far larger that don't generate the kind of income that economic development does. And yet, what you do is absolutely amazing, and I'm surprised that you're not asking for five more people so that we can generate gazillion more dollars for Glendale. But I do have one question with regard to this arts coordinator. The poor arts department has kind of bounced around from department to department. I know it was in Recreation, and now it's landed with you guys. And it seems that so far, we haven't found a good fit as to where it actually belongs. So I'm hopeful that it works out here. But, and I, and forgive me for this, but don't we have Mogdon, and I'm not even going to bother trying to pronounce her last name, don't we have Mogdon who does exactly that kind of work now? So wouldn't this be a replication of what she does?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, I appreciate the question because I appreciate the opportunity to answer. So Ms. Moshe Ghanbahzadi is here with us today, and she is our Arts Program Manager as well. So she operates and runs that entire program as a, as a sole employee. That division has bounced around, and it was a concerted effort for us to bring it into economic development, to be able to elevate arts and culture in this community because it does go hand in hand with economic development. And so we had mentioned there in those speaking points relative to the amount of activity and required administrative function that takes place. Ms. Ghanbahzadi is handling all of that as a single employee, and with that temp staff that she's had sometimes has support, but it's not consistent. And so our ask for this coordinator is actually support for her so that our division can actually grow and utilize that CIP funding that is put into the Arts Fund in a more robust way to see activity take place throughout the city. The Arts Commission also asked us this year through part of their goals to increase activity taking place across the city, and in order to do that, we do need to increase the capacity of the individual who's handling that division.
Mayor, if I could continue. Well, I understand in that, and that does make sense. And I would comment and say that art and culture are probably the two things that we have been, the city generally has been short-sighted about, and we have not devoted enough attention to those areas. And yet, I think they reflect, perhaps more than anything else, the soul of the community. And yet, for many years, it's, it's been neglected and not focused upon. So I hope, I, I am hopeful that you will elevate this whole goal of bringing more arts and culture to Glendale because I, I think it's important for every resident. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
More a comment, Mayor. Again, I would just want to thank the Economic Development Department for all that they do. I'd just like to echo Councilmember Clark in her comments because it, it is a lot of work that you've done, and you are the lifeblood of the growth of the city. And I really do support this Art and Culture Coordinator within the department. I've already experienced where that can go. We've already had some conversations on something in my district, and I really think it's going to be a real boon to help promote arts within the city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go ahead and take a, a quick break. I'd like everybody to be back here by 10:45, so that's 11 minutes. We're going to take a break. We'll take a break. All right, we're going to start in one minute. Do we know which button advances? The right? All right, everybody will take your seats. We'll get started, please. All right, we'll go ahead and get going here again. So next up is Public Facilities, Recreation, Special Events.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here this morning to present the budget for the department. Is it queued up? There it is, thank you. So the Public Facilities, Recreation, Special Events Department has a budget of $15.5 million, as you heard earlier, and 66.5 FTEs, the division arrangement and the mission statement I believe you're familiar with. Our budget is split up by salaries, about 52%, operating 42%, and internal services at 6%. So as we go into performance measures, you're going to hear a lot from me this morning, COVID. So COVID really impacted us, as you know, and our events are down, our activities are down all across the board. The cost for parks maintenance is one that did not go down because we kept the parks open all season and still had people out there servicing them every single day this last year. The tourism area was impacted hugely, as you, I'm sure, are very much aware. The 29% decrease in fiscal '20 for hotel occupancy was a big hit. It's come back significantly and starting to see an improvement. They're projecting a 1% growth in '21 and maybe a 1.5 next year. It might be till '23 until it's fully recovered. The special events, we had a big workshop with you last week and talking about special events. You know that this year, almost everything, everything was canceled. We did have an increase in our social media interactions, and thank you to Public Affairs and their excellent team that helped us get out and learn how to use that platform and get more information out to the public on social media. And then in our recreation area, also impacted by COVID, and as you know, the Glendale Adult Center was not open at all this year. We're hoping that with the remodeling that's going on, we'll be able to get it open this summer and begin programming and activities there again. Highlighting some accomplishments for the department, we have wrapped up the draft of the Department Master Plan. It'll be coming to workshop next week for the council for an opportunity to discuss that. Pretty excited about that. The Right Tree, Right Place program was a great partnership we did with the Salt River Project and our Right-Away Division this last year. We planted hundreds of trees in town in both parks and streets. We did have some trees removed, but I don't believe we had any complaints or issues. So I think it was a very well-received program. We did some projects at Bonzel Park and made some improvements there, adding the pickleball court with a grant, but also working with Glendale Works and doing some cleanup and trying to change the activities and behaviors that were going on there that are impacting that park so significantly. And then we're just now finishing up the splash pad at O'Neill Park, which has been an ongoing project of interest to the council. Our supplemental requests for the year are for some new fitness equipment at the Glendale Adult Center. So when we reopen, well, next year, we can replace some equipment that's been kept alive for a couple extra years than normal. Hero Splash Pad, some deferred maintenance on that, some pumps and valves and equipment to get the, to keep that water feature going. About $40,000 for painting park amenities. It's an item that we've heard from council a lot that making our parks look as best we can, and sometimes it's as simple as painting a pole or dealing with a remada or a side of a building, and that will help us address that. The $50,000 for Glen Lakes is for a new park that's coming on with the sale of that and the redevelopment of that property. The Visitors Bureau Tohono-Onum Grant, excuse me, is an annual supplemental. It's just for the percent increase that goes with that grant each year. And then we're asking for some additional money to help with the custodial increases for our park restrooms. We requested a new FTE for a park service worker and cost, ongoing cost for a vehicle for that worker, a new FT for a senior service worker, and then some temporary general laborers and temporary park rangers. And then finally, in the Vehicle Replacement Fund, two vehicles, one for a service worker and one for the CIP project manager we brought on last year. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of issues, if you don't mind, on page 54. When you talked about salaries, or you basically, basically the pie chart, is 52% of a normal parks and recreation budget, is that typical, 52% of it being salaries?
Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Tomachov, I think that's actually a little low. I think a normal parks department is quite a bit higher. We're very staff-intensive, and we have a lot of part-time staff. As you know, we bring on summer staff and bring on temporary employees, so that would make that a higher number.
And I know a lot of the temporary staff, at least, well, not this year, we didn't, but, I mean, a normal, a big amount of that cost is offset by revenue because they're running programs that generate revenue, so I understand that. I was just curious because, and we can get to it when we talk about the Parks Master Plan next week, but one of the pages in there showed that our cost per employee was about triple the national average. So I don't know, I don't know what the story behind that is. I'm sure we'll find out next week, but I just was curious if 52% was standard, basically, for the industry for salaries. We can leave that for next week. I did want to also bring up another thing. I, you know, we spent a couple of years as a council and made the painful decision to close Glen Lakes, and there was a lot of discussion surrounding the use of that funding that would be the best for the community. And I thought we had a consensus to direct that money towards parks, and I know that the money right now is sitting in contingency or fund balance, wherever it was put, but it's in a placeholder to be used for this fiscal year. And I'm asking that we put this money in, as a placeholder in parks. And I don't know whether, I think the, at least in my mind, the fair distribution would be, I believe it's $6.5 million, a million dollars allocated per district to be worked with parks staff on figuring out how to best use that money by the district, and then a million and a half for the Beryl District because that's where Glen Lakes, those residents actually literally lost in amenities. So I don't know where, how everybody else feels about that. I know if we don't put the money in this budget, we can't use it in this budget and it to be distributed, you know, divvied up as just a line item for, you know, Saguaro District, Beryl District, Yucca District, to basically, you know, help us get caught up with our parks and put the money in here. I feel like we made a commitment to the community to do that as we were discussing Glen Lakes, that that money was going to benefit the entire community. So I'm open to discussion about it, but that's my feeling on it.
Mayor, members of the council, just as a reminder, we did put that money into the budget in the sense of we created the appropriation for about $68.5 million, I believe, in anticipation of the American Rescue Plan money and also the funds that came in from Glen Lakes to be decided at a further, future workshop as to how that can be spent. So it is there, and it will be available for spending, and how it is spent can be, doesn't not have to be determined today. Of course, that is up to the council, but it doesn't have to be determined today. It will be there in appropriation to be spent in the future.
Mayor?
Mayor, I know that the city council's really put a lot of emphasis on parks and recreation, and we've talked about it a lot. And what I want to do is recognize all the efforts that your department has put into making this happen. I know next, I believe next week, we're going to be talking about the master plan for parks. And as I look at that document, I really am impressed with the amount of time and effort that went into to prepare it and to get things ready for the council. You know, we're not, we don't always agree on where we want to go with things, but I believe the don't always agree on where we want to go with things, but I, I believe you've done an absolutely fantastic job in getting things prepared for the money that we are planning to spend and invest in our parks. It's, it's a major task. I'm really looking forward to continuing over the next several years to improve our park system, and I think it's, it's what our citizens really do want, and I appreciate what we're doing to make that happen, the conversations I've had with you personally about the things going on within the Saguaro District and the improvements we're making throughout the city. I know it hasn't been easy dealing with all of our demands and requests, but I just wanted to recognize your department for all that they do to make these things happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. To Councilmember Tomachoff's comments a minute ago, and I think her request, if I'm understanding it correctly, and what I'm hearing from residents in my district as well, is that through the Glen Lakes process, we, on several occasions, expressed that the proceeds from Glen Lakes would go into parks, into our Parks Department for parks improvement citywide, and that, that certainly the idea was that it would increase, it would not supplant money that was already headed that direction, but it would, this would be an increase to our park spending. And I have residents that are concerned that, based on our discussion previously on the contingency fund, that this six and a half million from Glen Lakes is just sitting in one big contingency pot and isn't really designated as going towards park improvement. And so I think if it's possible, I'd like the council to consider that within the contingency, we have a specific Parks contingency line item that includes the six and a half million dollars, so that residents can be assured that it's, that's where the money is, is headed. And then I think the council member's idea of, in essence, splitting it equally among the districts with the surplus going to the Beryl District, you know, I don't want to sound self-serving or anything, but I think that the logic behind that is good and also gives each council member an opportunity to closely interact with the department over the needs in their specific district and the priorities for their residents. So I would like to see if other council members would support designating the contingency fund that way. Also had a question regarding, on slide 57, the performance measures. The, the first one there is to increase festival attendance annually by 5%. And it seems to me that one of the problems that we got into with Glendale Glitters, for instance, was that the success of, of the event was measured by, did we have more people this year than last year, which means more people next year than this year and every year going forward, and that's, in essence, how that festival outgrew. It's designed and it's our capability to support it. So I'm wondering if what we're looking for in, in increasing festival attendance by 5% is also with the idea of increasing the number of festivals, that we have more different things that our residents can go to, as opposed to just trying to, you know, measure success by bigger turnouts, but I would like to see us measure success by things that appeal to more various segments of our community.
Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Turner, I agree with that. As we work on the pivot strategy that you presented last week and refine that budget and the allocation of those resources, I think we work on this performance measure and make it reflect what we're trying to accomplish.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, Councilmember Aldama's not here, because we're getting the splash pad at O'Neill Park. That's going to be fantastic for the community there. I liked all the accomplishments. I wasn't even aware of quite how many trees and things have been replaced. But as I drive around my parks in my district, I'm pleased. People out there using the parks, which means that they really like them. I see families picnicking, organizing children and sports events at, at the parks. It's, it's one of my favorite things to do, is just drive the district and look at the parks and see how they're used. And I'm pleased with the parks in my, in my district, and I'm excited that we have money to talk about, to making all these new improvements coming forward. I can hardly wait, again, to look at the, the master plan. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo the comments of council members Malnar and you. Mr. Burke, I almost consider you an unsung hero. You, you came in and took over, basically, a dilapidated park system that had, basically due to economic conditions, had been ignored and neglected for many years, and you have worked very hard to turn that whole equation around. And I think we're beginning to see light at the end of the tunnel in that we are finally allocating resources to do major improvements at a lot of parks, and I think that will make residents very pleased. I know you don't, you, you don't get thanked very often, but I'm publicly thanking you for all that you've done. I've read the master plan, and it took a lot of effort and a lot of work to put that together, and it's well done and well thought out and well researched. That doesn't mean there won't be issues that, that I disagree, you know, necessarily agree with, but, but I do compliment you on the work of that master plan. And, and I can't thank you enough. Managing a park system is not easy, especially with all the diverse components, everything from live entertainment to, to sports, to facilities management. It's a very, very difficult department to work with, and I, I think you've done an outstanding job, and, and I publicly thank you for it.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to circle back to my initial idea or request, and I, I'm fine with what Councilmember Turner suggested, is at least we mark that, earmark that money. Maybe that's not the right word, but we earmark that money for parks, and we can leave it in contingency. It doesn't necessarily need to be moved into the parks' budget, but I just feel strongly that we, you know, we, we seemed committed to doing that when we, at multiple discussions that we had about Glen Lakes, that that money was going to benefit the, the parks throughout the community, and that by marking that in, leaving it in contingency but earmarking it for parks, we're letting residents know that that's what our intention is. So I'd be fine with doing it that way. Either way is fine with me.
Mr. Mayor? First of all, we appreciate the, the comments around here, and I know from speaking on behalf of Jim and his team, we're real excited about being able to start freeing up new resources to kind of get caught up on things. Kind of process-wise, just to kind of, we, we just went through our CIP, because in theory, the council could distribute the, the excess money from Glen Lakes on CIP projects, or the council could also do them as just part of deferred maintenance. And so there's a lot of ways that you have the options of taking that money and spending it. So our thought is, we're learning more every day about the COVID-2 money that we're expected to receive. I've, I've told Vicky and her team that as soon as we kind of get a clear understanding of the amounts, the timing of the receiving the money, and then what, how we can use it, we'll immediately schedule a workshop. And so at that point, then, not only will, can the council provide direction on how they want to spend the six-plus million from the sale of Glen Lakes, but there could be other priorities in, in parks as part of the COVID-2 money, and you could do that as well. So the only reason we haven't, you know, we, we want to get through the CIP process, because in theory, there may be an eligible CIP project that we can pay with cash, which is different than ONM. So the money is there. It won't be, it can't be spent and would not be spent by staff until given direction by the council. We thought it might be more beneficial to understand the larger pot, so that as you, as you decide your priorities, you know, then you're not constrained by, well, we're just trying to figure out how to only spend a constrained amount of money. You may say we have a much larger amount of money that we can, that we can spend. So we're, we're there, and we're going to try to get that workshop. That was a request of Councilmember Tomachoff at a, at a prior, at a prior meeting, and it is our intent to try to have that sooner rather than later. We're just trying to get all the program information together so we can give good information.
Malnar's next, I think.
Yes, along that concept. It's always been my understanding that, that, yeah, this money would go towards parks, but I believe with, even with our future capital expenditure program, there's hundreds of millions of dollars that we're putting into parks. And, I mean, we're talking just six. So we're putting money into parks. I mean, we haven't specifically earmarked those yet, but, I mean, I think the plan of this council is that we're going to do that. That money is going into parks. Now, I, I just, I don't think we need to be too concerned about, you know, saying, well, we have to earmark it that for only parks, because we already earmarked hundreds of millions of dollars going into parks. That's our plan, and we're going to do that, and that six million is a very small piece of that. But yes, it should go into parks, and I think it's going into parks. But we just need to recognize that. I don't think staff is trying to, to hide these numbers from us and not put it back into parks, because it's going into parks. We are spending millions and millions of dollars over the next 10 years into parks, whether we do it through bonds as well, because we don't have enough money to do it all just with cash, but we're going to be doing it, and I think it's the plan of this council to do that, and I think we'll move forward and make that happen.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hold on, hold on. Take everybody in order.
Oh, I thought you pointed.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Malnar. I'm not prepared to earmark or put something aside. I, I do know that the plan is to use the money for parks, but, but I think, I think the city manager's points were well-taken in that we're going to have a considerable amount of money to discuss in addition to that six million. And that six million may complement the, the CARES money that we will receive, but I, I want more information and a broader discussion, and I'm not prepared to earmark or take any action today with regard to any of that money until we have a full and robust discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't for one second suggesting that anybody was trying to hide money from us. I literally was just trying to be transparent. And, and while Glen Lakes was an amenity in the Beryl District, there, there were a lot of residents in my district that were concerned about what happened with Glen Lakes, about because of open space in the city. So I've heard from lots of my residents about. So I'm literally only trying to be transparent and, and make sure that that money goes where we said it was going to go. Not making any, I don't, didn't use the word hide. I'm just saying, we've, we said that's what we were going to do, and I must have missed where we were getting hundreds of millions of dollars to spend on parks. I, I believe we're only funded for, through 2023 in the CIP right now, and the bonds were around $40 million. So I don't know where the hundreds of millions of dollars for parks, we don't have hundreds of millions of dollars to spend on parks. But, you know, we're, we're way behind on where we want to be on parks, and I know, you know, we, we're making a lot of progress, but we have a lot of work to do, and we have a lot of, and the $40 million is not going to go, even if the bonds, which I, I think they will be approved in 2022, is not going to go anywhere near as far as I think where we as a council want to get with our parks. So that's my only point, is that we've got a lot of deferred maintenance, equipment, all kinds of things that need to be replaced. We need to finish Hero's Park. We've got a lot on our plate with parks. So, you know, six and a half million dollars is not a lot of money, but it's meaningful money to, to the residents. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Is that it?
Mayor, members of council, thank you for your great comments today. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Next up?
Our next presentation is the Mayor and Council Office Budget, which will be presented by Ms. Hanlong.
I'll be presenting the mayor's office and council office budgets. We do not have any supplemental requests for the council office. However, we are requesting adding the communications project manager position back into the mayor's office as an FTE. Back in fiscal year 1920, we did try a new service delivery model by utilizing a contract position versus an FTE. That service delivery model did not meet the needs of the office. Therefore, we are requesting reinstating that position as an FTE. There will be no budget impact as we are moving the funds from services and supplies into salaries and benefits. And I'm available for any questions.
Next.
We're going to go a little bit out of order for this next presentation. Our next presentation is going to be the Public Affairs Budget, which will be presented by Mr. Stoddard.
Good morning, Mayor and council. I'm going to stretch the meeting out a little bit while we wait for lunch to get here. So instead of wrapping up the, being the last department, I'll be the last department before lunch. So, Public Affairs, okay. I think it's, I know it was slide, like, 108.
Mayor, members of the council, the present, presentation begins on slide 108.
Okay, it looks like everybody had a chance to flip over there. So the Public Affairs Department consists of a couple of different divisions, Government Relations, Glendale Media, Digital Communications, Design Services, and Web Administration. In your binder, you have the detailed information regarding our operating budget, but for today's presentation, I wanted to focus on the transformation that has occurred over the last five years in our Glendale Media and Digital Communications efforts. Prior to me supervising Public Affairs, the focus of the staff and their efforts was really on programming for a cable television station, with broadcasting live meetings and doing occasional shows, which was understandable. Glendale's Channel 11 has been around for almost 40 years now. I went back and looked. It started in 1982. Some of you in the, the council may remember this, but it was an agreement between Glendale and at the time Camelback Cable Vision, which I don't, Councilmember Turner's chuckling, he probably remembers. And things have changed dramatically, and the team for all of those years did a great job with the responsibility that they had with that cable television station and did a lot of great work. But when I was assigned Public Affairs, I had discussions with the city manager, Kevin Phelps, with members of the council, with other employees, and it became very clear that there had to be a pivot, that we had to modernize and shift and transform our efforts into a kind of new digital age, reach new audiences both internally within the city for our communications and externally as well. You all know that the way people are getting their information has changed rapidly, and it continues to change, and there will probably be new things that, that come up about how people communicate. But we had to adapt quickly. So about five years ago, we developed a strategic plan that was future-focused on how we could become a leader in governmental communication. And we saw the efforts of, of that become even more critical over this last year during the pandemic, when we had to communicate not only to our own employees, but to the public in lots of different ways, and, and even how we set up a council meeting and how we had people access that during times, during this pandemic. We were flexible and adaptable because we had, had kind of established this strategic plan. But we didn't want to just copy what other cities are doing. We wanted to see the best practices, but we also want to be a leader and set the standard of, of what you can accomplish and what we can do. And while we're still working on accomplishing that goal every day, and that will be something that we're driving to, I think we've accomplished a lot, and I'm proud of our efforts up to this point. So first of all, you all know the name change. We don't refer to ourselves as Glendale 11 Staff in our, in that area. We are now the Glendale Media Team. We focused on our efforts on becoming a professional, high-quality video production operation instead of just a cable television operation. We realigned our positions, the job duties, the responsibilities, to be more reconciled with what that- We realigned our positions, the job duties, the responsibilities, to be more reconciled with what that, what that meant and how to accomplish that, to get the right people into the right jobs. So through retirements, attrition, we have gotten those people into the position. And I know you work with many of the, the individuals on that Glendale Media Team. So instead of positions like we used to have, like broadcast engineer, station managers, we now have positions like multimedia journalists, video producers, digital communications managers. Our video and communications are now being put out to meet people where they are. Instead of trying to draw people in, we're going to where they already are, on their devices, online, through social media. We're also focusing on enhancing our bilingual communication and outreach to the Spanish-speaking community. We're making our content available both English and in Spanish. Another important dynamic is that our communication is happening in real time now. Previously, staff would go out with a camera, shoot an event, maybe take Glendale Glitters, for example. They'd shoot it, get pictures, videos, maybe do some interviews. They'd go back and they'd work on that feature for a few months and have it ready to go to be broadcast on Channel 11, like in March. So obviously, it was months after the event. It was way beyond when the content was relevant. Now our team goes out, as you know, and shoots a, a video on smaller handheld high-definition cameras, do the same interviews, go to the event, capture the stuff. And then they immediately either sit down with like a MacBook, plug the computer in and get things set up and designed, or they go back to their editing base and quickly do the same thing. And almost within hours of the actual event, we have something out on the, out on the internet or on social media for people to view. They're searching for that type of content because they're actually attending the events, and so it's relevant. It's a timely manner, and we can engage with them more, much more quickly. Previously, as you know, the shows that the Channel 11 did were kind of set, scheduled, very little flexibility or deviation from how those came forward. We've customized our scheduling now to allow for ultimate flexibility, to also foster new content and ideas. And a lot of these ideas come from not just our Glendale Media Team, but they come from employees. They come from our outside stakeholders. They, they, even some have come from the council. Councilmember Clark had a positive experience with a constituent and an employee that did some, some great work and kind of did something exceptional. And she asked us if we could highlight that specific event. And so just that one idea itself kind of came into our ongoing Working For You series where we highlight an employee, their job, show the community what they're doing, have the benefit of it, how they serve the public. And then, in those circumstances, if there's a kind of exceptional thing that happened, we highlight that as well. So we're always looking for those new type of ideas so that we can communicate what we do with the citizens and then also the two-way communication with the citizens back to us. So over these efforts over the last five years, these have translated into things that you guys see. The production of promotional videos, live reports, streaming meetings on YouTube and Facebook, doing Facebook Live meetings when we're not putting out official broadcasts of meetings. We do community meetings. We do your, we can Facebook Live your district meetings, which allows the engagement back and forth and for people to ask questions even during those meetings. Our community incident reports partnering with PD, you've seen those over the last few years. Those, those have been tremendously valuable in when we have situations that involve our police or shootings that a lot of times bring a lot of high-profile attention. We're able to get out and share the information on a fact-based setting, allow people to, to see and to hear the explanation of what's going on, and then to be able to go to the online resources that we point them to for additional information of our, our policies and procedures. We're telling visual stories on our exposure site. We're coordinating social media messages with our stakeholder partners. And then you'll also notice that we're packaging media kits so that radio, print, and TV are able to cover and to, to broadcast the events or the announcements and the things that we do. If they can't physically be here to cover it themselves, they can go on our website and we package the interviews. We package the B-roll, we package the media releases so that they can access us and format it in a way that's available for them to do the broadcast. That has been very successful. As I said at the beginning, we're about flexibility. We're about adapting to whatever the new ways are that we, we need to be able to communicate. And we never stop looking for those ways to, to do that. This year, Vicky, if you guys want to flip to the supplemental requests. We have one supplemental request, and you're probably familiar with it. When we, when we purchased our new closed captioning hardware and software a few months ago, and we brought that to the council, we told you we'd be coming back as a supplemental in the budget for the maintenance and warranty agreement with that. This was software that we needed to become in compliance with new FCC regulations. But as a side note, I'll point out that one of the things that we worked on the vendor with was to make sure that we have their new technology and hardware so that we could not only provide closed captioning of the live produced, the live videos that we're broadcasting, but for all of the produced videos that we're, we're producing, that we have closed captioning embedded in there in both English and Spanish. And I believe that we're, we may be the only, if, if not one of the only cities in the state that currently provides that both English and Spanish embedded in the actual video for, for the videos that we produce and the live thing. So we're very proud of that. So with that, Mayor and Council, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have regarding Public Affairs.
Mayor? Thank you. I like the direction the department has gone, and I appreciate your efforts because you are reaching out to new generations who are very comfortable with social media and the internet. And I commend you on that. But I, I still have one concern, and that is with seniors who are not comfortable with the internet or social media. There are a couple of wonderful old ladies who call me from time to time. And one of, one of the things that I hear from them over and over again is that they are not aware of a lot of things that are going on in Glendale. And their, their only source of information that they seem comfortable with is printed material that they receive from the city. So I, I would like to see us not forget and leave behind the senior community. And I wonder when the Adult Center opens, for example, if we can develop some kind of media screen that highlights various things going on in Glendale that a senior who drops into the Senior Center can sit down and just watch and find out what's going on in Glendale. But again, it's the senior community that concerns me. And how do we outreach them effectively so that they're not left behind as we march into our new future? Thank you.
Oh, Mayor. I had a, thank you. Mr. Stoddard, yes, compliments on the new type of things that your department's doing and how quickly we're getting information out to residents. And I think, you know, and that's great, all the new media stuff, the Facebook and, and also in how we've transitioned over to this building almost seamlessly. And we've been operating here and, and being able to continue all that, I know is to your credit, and I appreciate it. I would like to say that in regards to some of the programs that council members in particular perhaps have done in the past, it does represent some good information. You know, there's some real knowledge in there. And I'm thinking, you know, for instance, of the, the program that Councilmember Clark did on the Sugar beet plant. When people ask me, well, what's up with that, or what's it like, and that sort of thing, I refer them to our YouTube channel where they can search for that and find the, the video and the drone flyover and that sort of thing. You know, Councilmember Tomachoff did an excellent program on Thunderbird Park, and we've all done them on things in our district or around the city. I'm wondering if perhaps sometime couldn't be dedicated towards some of those that really are library, in essence, worthy that, you know, that are, that have continuity. They weren't just the grand opening of the latest restaurant or something. If some of those couldn't be re-edited to tighten them up and make them a single sitting kind of a program on the YouTube channel that we could direct residents to or that residents would find on their own when they're searching YouTube for Glendale, Arizona, and others who are maybe researching coming here on a vacation or something like that to, to see a tightened-up version. Because I know the ones that we recorded in the past had commercial breaks in there and that sort of thing, which really doesn't work with YouTube, and we want it to flow seamlessly. So I would suggest that as maybe something the department could look at doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Do, do we know if Chief Garrison is here? I thought I seen him walk in the room. Head and, and go ahead and have Chief Garrison present, and then we'll do lunch after he's finished. You're up, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, I believe Mr. St. John was going to join Chief Garrison. So if you'll give us just a second, we'll see if we can locate him.
My apologies. Thank you for waiting. This is a follow-up to the Police Department presentation. Inadvertently deleted a slide and figured we should probably talk about these supplementals. So the first is the Motorola Premier One Suite Maintenance. This is a new CAD RMS system that the Police Department has been working to implement and is ready to implement. This is the ongoing maintenance cost for that system. The next are cell phones for all sworn personnel. Right now, we have cell phones with sworn personnel in various positions. But the Patrol Division has a shared cellphone program. And what we'd like to do is put a cellphone in the hands of all of our patrol officers so that they're using a police department-issued or city-issued cellphone rather than their personal cellphone to operate various apps that are necessary for certain parts of our city. ShotSpotter, for example, is an app on your phone, and our officers get the alert before the communications or dispatchers actually get the alert and at times are on scene when the call is being dispatched. And so it's a very helpful app. There are evidence apps on your phone that you can take pictures of evidence, and it gets directly downloaded to the cloud. And there's no charge when you download that evidence through the app. If an officer takes a picture with a camera, for example, and then brings that camera back to a station and downloads through a docking station, then there is a charge for the storage of that evidence. It's, it's a push from the companies to try to get police departments to use the app instead of docking stations at the police stations. The next is an expansion of Schedule Express. Schedule Express is a scheduling software the Police Department uses in its Patrol Division currently. And they'd like to expand to Communications and Detention. And these are the necessary licenses to do that expansion. Security contractor cost increases. We are currently developing an RFP to go out into the market and renew our security services contract. We anticipate that there will be a cost increase. And the Police Department is currently funding those cost increases. And this is to supplement what we believe the cost increase to be. And then the last is temporary pay for video redaction specialists. Currently, the Police Department uses records technicians to do redactions of video and audio. They're not trained for video redaction until they come into the Police Department. Typically, we hire data entry, and at some point in their career, they're cross-trained for video redaction. Our belief is that if we hire someone from the media market who is specifically trained and has the necessary equipment to cut and splice video and do audio redactions, that they will be much faster than the personnel we're currently using. We have a need for video redaction specialists within the Police Department. They're backlogged several months in some cases. And very patient media and public waits sometimes several months for us to release information to them, particularly if it's body-worn camera video. An example would be the incident that we had at Westgate this past May with a person with a firearm causing injury. There was a lot of body camera associated with that call for service, and every media outlet wanted to see every piece of video. And so there, a lot of time was spent doing the necessary redactions. In addition, in legislation this year, they're proposing a bill that would cause further redaction of video. Anyone not involved in the incident would need to be blurred out. And then, of course, anything, license plates, things of that nature currently are blurred out. But I think they're just putting that into the bill as well. And so this area of our Police Department is only going to become more cumbersome. And our belief is that by hiring media specialists rather than records technicians, we'll be able to accomplish more with less personnel. And this is a supplement for a part-time person. This person currently works for Mr. Stoddard's marketing team of Public Affairs and has capacity to come into the Police Department probably 19 to 20 hours a week and demonstrate what he can do on video and audio redaction. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about these.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that's an excellent idea to have somebody who's actually, you know, experienced and understands how to, probably how to streamline that process. But my question is, you just mentioned that, you know, when we have a major incident, we can anticipate a lot of media requests for, and I know some cities have found that it's more efficient, maybe not, and I don't know whether we want to talk about, we have talked about it before. Basically, making, redacting the video and then just making it available and let the media go and find what, what they want and, and make clips themselves. Where you're not taking, you know, getting multiple, when we, something like a Westgate incident happens, we know we're going to get a bunch of media requests. And maybe even only just for those videos, put it, get it redacted, get it ready to distribute and say, here are the videos for Westgate, and let the media access them. We have open government portals already in the city. And then they can pick and choose what they want instead of us having staff try to fulfill the media requests. I just don't know if there's been any conversations about that, kind of aligning with our open government process. Maybe not on, like I said, not on all video, but especially, we know when we're going to get a lot of media attention and be, and do it that way.
Mayor Councilmember Tomachoff, we have had several conversations about essentially what you do. You blur your video, you mute the sound, and you put the blurred video out into the general public. And then anybody that would like a piece of that video can make that specific request. Several agencies across the nation do that, Seattle PD being the largest that I know of. And they seem to be having success with it. It is a conversation that we will continue to have internally, talking to our information, our Innovation Technology Department. It, it's not something we want to try to do today. There requires a lot of IT support for something like that and server space because that video has to be housed somewhere. And we believe that the way we're operating and growing and expanding our redactions, which is what other Valley cities are doing, I should mention, is the right way to go today. But at some point, I think you're right, we're going to need to take a different route.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor. Mr. St. John, with regard to the cell phones. So I assume that those sworn personnel are receiving a stipend, and this is just for the device. If so, from whose budget will you be paying for replacements for those phones that get lost, damaged?
Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, the cell phones that are being purchased for the Patrol Divisions are not in replace, are not in place of a stipend. Those officers don't receive a stipend. receive a stipend. Uh, they have a shared cellphone program. So out of the Foothills Patrol Division, for example, they may have a dozen cell phones that get handed around to different officers. And what we're finding is, uh, officers are choosing not to use those because they don't have frequently contacted numbers. The phone books don't work as well. Uh, and then, um, they're not recognizable when you're texting or calling or, or doing different things. And so, uh, what we're doing is purchasing the devices. Actually, I think the devices are given to us by our provider. And what this dollar amount does is allow them to be connected to the network. And so when a cellphone is damaged or lost, very typically after doing an investigation into destruction of city property, we get a replacement phone for free from the company that is our service provider.
Thank you, Mayor. If I may, so, so then, uh, just to be clear, our sworn police officers do not receive a stipend for, uh, for using a telephone? That's, that's, I guess, assumed part of their, their tools for their job?
Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, there are positions within the police department. For example, the homicide unit, vehicular crimes, those that are, um, that need to be on call, that have the choice to either have a cellphone or a stipend. Uh, and it was about 50/50 in past years, but we're moving away from the stipend model to an actual issued phone. Uh, not only is it more cost beneficial for the city, it guarantees that an officer's, or detective, I should say, won't use their personal phone for business and then be subject to subpoena.
Got you. So they're using the device and the service all covered in one. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Okay, Chief, you're the only thing holding us up between lunch.
This ought to be short.
Because I am.
We can, alrighty. So, uh, Chief Garrison and I will present the fire department budget and the supplementals, uh, being requested this year as part of the fire budget. Again, very familiar, your mission statement, be safe, be kind and be accountable. The, the structure of our fire services is listed. Salaries account for 82% of the overall budget. The operating budget is about 6.2 million. Talking about performance measures, uh, when we look at response times, we look at the 90th percentile, which means 90% of the time we get to that call for service within this timeframe. Benchmark Cities looks at an average. An average can be a useful number to look at. We believe that looking at the 90th percentile is a better number and it is, it is the number that nationally fire departments compare each other to. And so that is why we're presenting the 90th percentile. And as you can see, we're estimating a mild improvement this fiscal year. Uh, and our target for next fiscal year would be, uh, kind of equal to where we've been over the last couple of years. One thing I'll talk about with response times, this, this is the 90th percentile average for the entire, for all the companies that work within the city. So we do have some areas of the city where the response time is less than the 712 and other areas where it's greater than the 712. And that is the model that Chief Garrison, his team and I have been working on in determining where best to deploy a medical response unit, for example, to supplement not in constant staffing, but in a Glendale-owned and operated and responding unit, uh, that can handle advanced life support calls. And that's kind of the next metric that I'll talk about. You can see that, uh, our ALS, BLS, Calls for Service, so that's Advanced Life Support, requiring a medical response unit or an engine company to respond, uh, and our basic life support, which can be handled by a low acuity if we have one available. And we do have two low acuity, low acuity units deployed, uh, and they do take a great number of our low acuity calls. But advanced life support calls are about 60% of the total number that you see there for Glendale ALS and BLS calls, about 60% of them across the board. And of course, it's different from station to station, but roughly 60% are advanced life support. The other 40% are basic life support. And so there is, and, and in most stations, we're seeing the increase in the advanced life support calls for service. Uh, and so we believe that the proper growth model for our city is that medical response unit and the deployment of medical response units during peak times to supplement on those advanced life support calls that'll help derive our 90th percentile response time down.
Just so the slide isn't confusing to anybody, um, the parentheses of 712 and then the numbers under those that are in parentheses are as of, uh, February 28th. So that was our point in time. We didn't add that asterisk to the slide, so I apologize that. And then the estimate moving forward is another 3% increase. So we're seeing about a 3% increase. Thank you.
And I'll skip to, uh, some accomplishments. And so one of the things that we want to talk about as far as our accomplishments, COVID was a difficult year with our adult care centers and other facilities that require annual fire inspections. And they weren't allowing fire inspectors to come into their buildings because of COVID. We had to find a way to conduct those inspections. We're one of the only cities that recognized that this was a need. And so our fire marshal, Chuck Jenkins and his team developed a program for virtual fire inspections. And to date, we've done 98 virtual inspections and it has proven to be very efficient and cost effective. And we plan on continuing with virtual, virtual fire inspections. So essentially, we get on a Zoom or a Teams link or Skype with the healthcare provider and we have them walk us around their facility and show us the different things that we need to inspect. Uh, and it has been very, very beneficial from both the perspective of our customer and from the fire marshal's office. It is a very efficient way to conduct these inspections. And to our knowledge, we're the only city in the state that's gone to this model or has attempted this model. And it's, it's, it's really been a good thing for us. And so my hat's off to the fire marshal for coming up with the idea. Onto our supplementals. Uh, we went out with a request for proposal last year for medical direction and awarded that medical direction to a doctor in the valley, a doctor we've been using for quite some time. And we had to increase his cost to get him more equal to where the market is. And this 39,200, in addition to the budget we already have in that line, brings us, uh, well within the market and what we need for that contract. SmartGov, uh, I believe you heard Mr. Marchia talk about that from Innovation and Technology. It's a system that we're implementing through development services. The fire marshal's office is responsible for plans examining from a fire marshal perspective. We do that electronically and we need data service for the new tablets that the fire marshals have. And this 4,500 covers the connection of those devices to the internet. Our CAD dispatch fees is the next line. Uh, when we talk about CAD, we're talking two years in arrears. So this coming fiscal year, we'll be paying for FY20's actual calls. And we are charged per call that occurs within the city of Glendale. If a Glendale unit responds to the city of Peoria or city of Phoenix, we are not charged for that call. Those cities are charged for those calls. We are only charged for the calls that occur within our city limits. And, uh, there is typically a small increase from, from year to year. And this represents the increase, uh, because of an increase in calls for service and a small increase in the cost per call.
Rick, I just, to be clear, we're also charged for other cities answering calls in Glendale, correct?
Mayor, that is correct.
No.
Mayor, let me ask Chief Garrison to correct me.
Yeah, uh, Mayor, members of the council, so that is not correct. Sorry, Rick. And I, my fault for not briefing you. So we're only charged for the calls within our city and that is per incident. So if we have two or three fire companies respond to one incident, we're just charged once. We're not charged for calls that we respond to other cities. And likewise, they're not respond to calls that come in ours. And we don't get charged when they come in ours. It's pretty basic and clean.
Okay, alright.
Thank you.
Cleared that up. Thank you.
Next is the Drug Box, Drug Box Refrigerator Comp E-Lock. On each of our engine companies and ladders, we have a drug box, uh, for the medics that work on those rides for dispersal into the community as needed. Uh, the E-Locks on the current refrigerators are malfunctioning, not working properly. And so we'd like to replace all of the E-Locks to ensure that no one can break in and steal drugs or, or cause any harm. Radio repairs, uh, this is a basic supplemental, small amount, uh, for the repairs that are needed to our radios as they malfunction and things are needed. Out of the general fund, uh, we continue to, to hire and see the need for, uh, additional funding for self-contained breathing apparatus for our firefighters. This supplemental, uh, helps us get to where we need to be and, uh, will continue as an ongoing. And then thermal imaging cameras. Thermal, thermal imaging cameras are used by fire companies when they respond to a fire. It helps them to determine where the fire is in the building. Uh, for example, if smoke is coming out of an attic of a home, the thermal imaging camera will tell you what portion of the attic the fire is actually burning and where the smoke is coming from. So it may be billowing out of two or three sides of the house. Uh, and this thermal imaging camera will tell us exactly where the fire is in the attic so we can more appropriately address that fire. It also helps with rescue because it will tell us in a smoke-filled room where the person is that we're trying to rescue. And so, uh, each company should be equipped with a thermal imaging camera. Ours are very old. Many of them are not working. Uh, we have them on our battalion chief rides right now and several engine companies do have one, but they should really be, uh, on every engine company and every battalion chief's ride and ladder, anybody that could respond for fire suppression. And, uh, we need them to be the same model. Uh, we don't want to have several different models out there in case there's a need for one engine company to use another engine company's thermal imaging camera. They need to, we all need to be trained on the same device. And so we will be making two purchases, 105,000 this year and 105,000 next year to update all of those cameras and get everybody on the same page. Turnouts, um, turnouts are about 10,000 apiece. And each firefighter from higher date through their career, uh, needs, well, they'll need more than three through their career, but from higher date and then out of the academy and onto an engine company, uh, they'll need three. They need one for the academy alone, one set for the academy. And during the academy, they rough them up. I mean, they've got these guys crawling through dark spaces and, in smoke-filled rooms on a daily basis. And so the turnouts at the end of an academy are typically pretty worn and torn. And so we issue two new sets of turnouts when they go to the engine company, uh, which is a standard now for cancer mitigation, for each firefighter to have two sets of turnouts. And, uh, because of the number of retirements and the hiring that we've been doing, we need additional funds this year to purchase those turnouts. Then this 332,000 represents that. Uh, there is a radio through the RWC TDMA upgrade that is specific to the fire department. So other departments use RWC regional wireless connection for our radio systems. Uh, but the fire department has a specific need and type of radio that they use. And there was a small uptick in the cost for that this year. And so the 24,750 covers that increased cost. And then we have, uh, operations overtime and the amount of 600,000. Uh, Chief Garrison and I have been working and his team, I should say, uh, because between Chief Benson, Chief Garrison, Chief Barnes, every day we're talking about overtime and how we mitigate overtime and how we keep our firefighters healthy and in the field, working on their engine companies so that we don't have to pay overtime. Uh, and it, it can be at times an uphill battle and COVID made it an even steeper uphill battle. And so what we're trying to do is work with our budget finance department to right-size their overtime budget, figure out how many firefighters we actually need in the field. There's always that sweet spot of number of firefighters you have in the field, your constant staffing model and, uh, an amount that you pay in overtime to fill that constant staffing model. And we believe that there, there's some work that can be done there, some analytics that we can look at and more right-size, uh, the fire department for our needs today, uh, so that this overtime amount can at some point be reduced. But for today, uh, we do need the supplemental. And then, uh, kind of an exciting front, uh, the Safer Grant, uh, issued very recently. I think we submitted back in March for eight firefighter positions, which included benefits. Uh, so the only thing the city would be paying for are the equipment related to those firefighters. And it has to be for a new program. And so the new program would be another medical response unit. Um, back in November, we had a conversation with council about implementing a second medical response unit and trying to do that within the existing budget. I believe this, at least in part, accomplishes, uh, what we were set, set out to do, and that is, uh, staff a second medical response unit. This will be a seven-day-a-week medical response unit, 10 hours a day during peak time, uh, and most likely deployed out of Station 158 near 83rd Maryland, where we're seeing, uh, some of the greatest need right now.
Yes. Uh, thank you, Mayor. This is with regard to overtime. I don't remember our budget year in recent memory where the fire department doesn't come with an overtime supplemental. First of all, I don't know why it's not incorporated into your budget. You know you're going to have overtime every year. Instead of coming to the general fund and always asking for a supplemental, number one. I understand that COVID exacerbated the need for overtime because you had firefighters, unfortunately, that contracted COVID. So that put a strain on the whole program. But quite frankly, I have seen, uh, a lot of lip service, but not a lot of action when it comes to solving the issue of overtime. And I would, I would like to see an emphasis upon that in the next year and in the years to come. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have a question about the FTEs for the MRUs. So I know we were unable to, uh, deploy the first MRU unit because the pandemic created, uh, a lot of quarantine issues. And we, we were using those for firefighters, I believe, that with the four FTEs we were using to backfill, um, people who were in quarantine. So, so is this eight positions to staff the, we still have those other four. Are they just basically going to be basic, uh, they're not going to do the MRU and these eight are to staff both MRUs? I just want to make sure I understand this.
Mayor, Councilmember Tomalchov, we will have two MRUs. One will be a 40-hour-a-week MRU staffed by four firefighters that this council has already approved. The other will be a seven-day-a-week. Uh, so seven times 10, 70 hour, quick math, a 70-hour work MR, uh, a week MRU. There will be an overlap day. That overlap day will be used for training and, uh, different needs from the fire department.
Okay, Mayor, so that, that makes sense. Are, so are we now in a position, um, because I've, I've been noticing the quarantine numbers are much more manageable than they were at, at the height of the pandemic. Are we in a, are we getting ready to roll out that first unit? Are we going to roll, roll these both? Hopefully, we're going to roll these both out here soon.
Mayor, Councilmember Tomalchov, uh, for the first time ever, I believe, Chief Garrison had to implement a mandatory overtime policy within the last couple of weeks. Uh, firefighters right now are tired, uh, have been working a lot, and we're now forcing them to work. Our plan was to roll out the, for the first MRU on June 1st, uh, Chief Garrison and I, after getting through the budget season, will sit down and look at our staffing and look at how many we have on modified duty, how many we have, uh, in various, uh, positions that require, they're not on the truck for one reason or another. We need to look at that number, understand it, uh, work with budget and finance. We're already, as Councilmember Clark alluded, over on our overtime. And we need to be very careful about not increasing that dollar amount significantly. But we do understand the direction from this council is to put that medical response unit out. And our plan is to still do that, but we do need to look at the numbers and understand it before we do.
Okay. Mayor, if I could continue. So these eight positions are basically, I mean, these are, these are going to be recruits that go through the academy. So this is months, months away from being able to do that. So, um, I mean, I, I'm excited to get, I know, I understand, you know, our, we had, the best laid plans were, had to be set aside because of the pandemic. I, I get that. And I know, I mean, I think, um, one of the days that I saw the report, I think we had 47, if I want to remember right, firefighters in quarantine. So I mean, I know, uh, you were managing a lot. Um, and I understand that, I mean, nobody likes to see overtime, but I understand this year it was really unavoidable. Um, but, um, I know, I know our residents, I've talked to several of our residents that live in my district that are looking forward, even though the that are looking forward, even though the medical, they're not going to be deployed even in their part of the city, but it still frees up other units all around the city just by having it. So I'm looking forward to being able to do that. Hopefully, we can get that going here pretty soon.
Thank you, Mayor. My question has, is in regard to protective equipment. I know over the last several years, we've added a lot of protective equipment and procedures to help limit the exposure of carcinogens to our firefighters. My question is, are we at the end of that technology? Are there still technologies and equipment out there that will help, again, prevent this kind of exposure, or are we pretty much at the height of that right now?
Mayor, members of the council, first of all, thank you from the council for really taking care of our firefighters over the last several years. Like you said, you have, you made a decision a few years ago to purchase a second set of turnouts for our members, and that's one of the greatest things we could do for their firefighter safety. So when they come back from a fire, that equipment is bagged up because it has all the carcinogens on it, and it is taken away to cleaners that you also supplied for us. So we absolutely appreciate that. As far as technology, it seems like this is the hot-button ticket, the hot-button issue in the fire surface is the carcinogens that we're getting from fires, just the combustions of fire. So I think that there's going to be more to come. The way we're fighting fires has actually changed. We don't expose ourselves as much as we have in the past. We still are an interior firefighting group, and we go in and we put the fire out, and you have to do that where the hazard is because that's where the victims are. But as soon as we do that, we back out. If we're just fighting to save property, we do that from a distance. So even the technology's improving, the way we're operating's improving, the way we're seeing ourselves in the future with firefighters, you know, retiring and then getting sick later. So I think that we're probably towards the, just past the middle of it where it has a lot of momentum, but I think there's probably things that are going to be forthcoming, better hoods, better equipment, better jackets that don't absorb the carcinogens. So I think we're headed in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. St. John, chief, good to see you. I just need some clarity on our medical response units. The one we have up now is a four-person unit, as I recall?
Yes.
As will be the new one that we'll be adding. Are we still going to continue using the initial two-person units that we stood up a couple of years ago?
Mayor, members of the council, we absolutely are. So the LA units are absolute, they are so effective for the type of BLS responses, and the MRU units are going to be effective for ALS and BLS responses. And I want to say this, just as a reminder, is these units remain within our city. They respond only within our city, and they help us respond to calls with our increased call volume. It gives an opportunity for us to, it actually has a positive impact on our response times and our customer survival rate. So they will be four-person units on the MRUs. They respond to a higher level of incidence. They're not quite the all-hazard units because they don't have all the type of equipment that a ladder and engine has, but they'll respond to a majority of our calls, which are EMS calls.
Okay, great. And Mayor, if I can continue. Sometimes in the budget process, we do get fixated on equipment and buildings and that sort of thing, but I'm glad that other councilmembers have raised their concerns for our employees, particularly in the two departments that you deal with, Mr. St. John and your department chief. So as was mentioned, we had, you know, COVID's had quite an impact, not just on the budget, but on our employees, particularly in those two departments. How are they doing now? Are they, is it getting back to normal for you as far as the number of employees that are exposed, infected, you know, quarantined?
Mayor, members of the council, so we're getting back to normal like the rest of the state and the rest of the city, and we have one member that is still hospitalized. He's actually in a rehab facility, and he's working through that. Most of our members, all of our other members have returned, and I think fortunately at this point, we don't see any kind of long-term effects from that. One of the big issues with COVID is the cystic fibrosis-type issue that takes place with the lungs, and we're not having that at this point. So our members, I think, if you just visit fire stations now, and we're still close to the public, but we visit them as a command team, the spirits are kind of coming back up, and people are feeling good about, they're feeling safer because we've kind of turned the corner on that, although we do practice all those precautions that we implemented when we go into people's homes and at fire stations. So we're still close to the public for visits and stuff, and we respond to the calls, but the attitude is improving. Thank you.
And I thank you, and Mayor, if I may. So I'm sure the whole council joins me in thanking our first responders for the extra danger that they put themselves into over the last 12, 15 months, and, you know, give our best to the firefighter that's still in rehab and has yet to return to work. And again, the stations aren't open for us to go visit, but when you do visit, please share our heartfelt concern and thanks to them for the service, the over and above service that they provided over the last several months. It's, you know, we really are about them.
We will do that, and we encourage them all to watch this, so hopefully they'll hear it directly from you all.
Except for those that are out providing service at this very moment. I believe one of our units was, I think it was Engine 151, was involved in a serious accident recently, and how are those firefighters doing? Are they, were they injured and are they recovering?
Mayor, members of council, they were not injured. They were going at prudent speed responding, and they were struck by a civilian vehicle, and obviously the fire engine is a lot larger, and they were all, they all had their seat belts on, which they better have, and they do. And so their first concern was for the patient in the other car, and they were able to treat that patient, and everybody's doing just fine.
Well, that's amazing, and again, very thankful for that. Thank you, gentlemen.
Hold on. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. This is just my opinion. I think it's offensive for a councilmember to say to the chief that we're receiving lip service. Chief, we're not receiving lip service. Overtime is a crucial, significant part of the fire department, as is for the police. Our firefighters are exhausted. They are tired. We need them to rest. It's not their fault if someone gets sick and they have to get somebody to cover them. If we want to reduce our overtime, then we need to stop our policy of constant staffing. We want constant staffing. We want firefighters to answer the call, day in and day out, seven days a week, 24 hours a day. That's the cost of doing business. It truly is. I don't know if there's ever a fix for overtime. Will we ever see zero? Absolutely not, but I don't feel like you're giving us, either one of you, giving us lip service. We want our exhausted firefighters to rest. We want them to arrive to the scene strong-minded, strong, you know, strength, and that requires to listen to your body when it tells you that you're sick and you need to stay home. And so I feel that's an offensive comment. That's just me. I don't feel like you've been giving lip service. Rick is going to be, is a significant addition to the fire and police, and I'm sure he's going to help with that. But look, we have firefighters that have been in the business for years, and they need to rest. And I'll tell you that if you ask any resident, they're going to tell you, I want somebody that can handle my call when they get here. And so that's just my opinion. And I do thank you, chief, and Mr. St. John yourself, and all of your sworn and uns sworn officers and workers for getting us through COVID-19. They too were affected by the virus, and as Councilmember Tomalchov mentioned, the numbers, they just went out there and did their work, COVID or not. And so thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. The relevant part of my previous comment was that overtime has been a constant and chronic issue, and that the fire department comes forward annually asking for supplementals. Has nothing to do with whether firefighters tired or not. That's ridiculous. But moving forward, it did bring up an issue that I wonder if the police department has ever addressed. Often, an officer will go, if it's a major fire and there'll be crowd control or whatever, but officers are often an auxiliary component of answering a fire call, and they have no protective gear as far as I know of. Do we have any plans, or is there any consideration given to a police officer who is in close proximity to the fire that is releasing all of these carcinogens to protect officers when they're performing their duties?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, it is a conversation that we've been having for a number of years now, since a study came out from the U of A recommending that the engineer be in an SCBA. And a lot of times, our police officers in past years, myself included, stood right next to the engineer while they were operating the equipment of the engine so that water can be put on the fire. And we've now trained our officers to not go anywhere near the fire. It's not our job to fight fires. Obviously, if we're first on scene and someone needs rescue, our officers handle that. And I'm proud, proud to say that we've awarded many officers lifesaving awards for their actions as first responders to a fire scene. But we tell them, when the fire department gets there, clear out, stay away from the smoke, don't inhale, don't be anywhere near it. So we can block hoses and guard hoses from a safe distance, which is our role, and keep the public out from a safe distance. And so it is an ongoing training and necessity, and we may eventually get to a point where we decide, technology-wise, that there is a, so all of our officers have a mask that has a proper seal for seaborne or chemical. It won't protect for some of the carcinogens that are brought out because of fire. Eventually, they will develop that technology, and when that technology is developed, it's likely that we'll be coming in front of council with a supplemental to purchase that for our officers, but until then, we tell them to stay back. Couple more things to cover. The last item on this slide is the equipment that goes on the medical response unit vehicle. So the $188,000 is the equipment for the firefighters. The $231,000 is the equipment that goes on the actual vehicle itself. On the next slide, you can see the $65,000 for the vehicle. And then for the grip stick, there is a need to upgrade the AV equipment in several of our heavily-used classrooms, and we believe that the $17,500 will get us where we need to be so that we're up to date with the technologies that people that come in to use the grip stick from outside non-COVID year, a lot of people, a lot of companies come in and like to use the grip stick for their conferences or seminars, and we want to provide the best equipment. They do pay to use the grip stick, and so we want to provide the right equipment. And then for our internal purposes, we'd like to have an upgrade of the equipment. And then the last is an appropriation for the eight firefighters in the SAFER grant. Even though the grant pays for those positions, we have to have the appropriation for their salaries and benefits, and that is for that. And with that, if there are any further questions, Chief Garrison and I are happy to answer.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Just quickly, on the second MRU equipment, does that include the vehicle and the equipment or just the equipment, the $231,265?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomalchov, $65,000 at the top of this slide is for the actual vehicle, and then $231,000 at the bottom of this slide is the equipment that goes on that vehicle. The total is about $296,000.
Okay, wow. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, gentlemen. With that, we're going to go ahead and break for lunch. I'd ask everybody to be back here promptly at 1:30. I'd ask everybody to be back here promptly at 1:30.
Okay, we're back in session. We can go ahead and introduce the next, uh, next department?
Mayor, members of the council, the next presentation will be organizational performance, which will be presented by Ms. Stanfield.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I am Kayla Stanfield, the new Director of Organizational Performance. And here with me is Ms. Ginny Dourda, who is the Business Intelligence and Analytics Officer. I have been here for about sixty days, so I figured I'd start out with just introducing myself briefly. As far as job history, I have about twenty-three years in the public sector, serving several entities such as the City of Goodyear, City of Surprise, City of Phoenix, and now here to City of Glendale. And I've also spent some time working for the State of Arizona, as well as Arizona State University. And I've also served as an adjunct faculty teaching mathematics and marketing coursework. As far as my academics, I have an undergraduate, undergraduate degree from Arizona State University in global business and financial management, as well as a master's degree in marketing. So it's an honor to serve in this position where I am able to combine that on desire to use data and analytics, as well as market what we're doing to tell the story that we want to share with our residents and with our internal stakeholders as well. As far as my volunteerism, I'm currently an executive board member for the Arizona State University Alumni Chapter, as well as for, as well as the National Forum for Black Public Administrators. And in both of those entities, I have been able to assist with diversity program, as well as professional development. So I'm hoping that through this position, I will be able to continue to serve in those roles. So as I mentioned, I've been here for, for about sixty days, and in that time, I have been able to meet with all of the directors, as well as the assistant city managers, deputy city managers, and the elected appointees. And I have received a great welcome from all of them, and they all were willing to share with me and my staff what, um, vision they have for their departments, and how we might be able to assist them in areas such as data analytics, performance management, and change management. So I do again want to thank Ms. Ginny Dourda for assisting me as I have been trying to transition into this role, as well as giving, um, thanks to my predecessor, Director Jean Moreno, for helping me to not only understand what the vision is for the department, but also for allowing me to come in with fresh ideas and new perspectives that will benefit the City of Glendale. So as I mentioned, we are a team of two FTEs, and our mission is to build a high-performance culture using business intelligence. We have an operating budget of about four, an operating budget of $477,000, and our salaries consist of sixty-six percent of that, and then we have thirty-one percent in operating. As far as our performance measures go, we are working on our data governance, as well as our data stewards. It's important for us as a city that we work on data that, um, is true, and that it's useful, and that we're able to use that data to make good decisions and have executive management to help guide the city through the use of that data. Currently, right now, we are working on our citywide data, and that will be published soon, as it is being reviewed right now by our data governance team. And we, we will have a hundred percent of the city departments trained in that area, as well as a hundred percent of our data stewards trained as well on how to use data, and, and also for us to receive insight on how they're using their data in their departments. One of the major things that we do work on in our department is that of What Works City certification. And we use What Works City certification as a national guide, and it's a philanthropy group that helps organizations use their data to not only increase employee and, and citizen engagement, but it also, again, helps us to, to improve our processes, as well as use data to make those good decisions. We set a target of fifty-one percent, because we thought that as the City of Glendale, we could achieve a silver certification, but right now, we're estimated to receive about sixty percent. We are currently waiting for that certification to be given out to us, but we're estimating that we will reach that sixty percent. So a few of our accomplishments, and I do want to give my team the credit, because most of this was accomplished before I did get here. But we were able to kick off our data governance program. And when we talk about data governance, it is us showing the city, as well as our residents, on how we're going to treat data. We, we don't just want to treat data as just numbers and things we're collecting, but we want to treat data as an actual asset. So through data governance, we work on making sure that we understand what it is, and that we have processes and procedures in place, and how we're going to use and post and public, and publish that data to everyone. And so through our data governance program, several of the things that we were able to accomplish was training someone in all of the departments, and we were able to post information on our open data portal, as well as complete that citywide data inventory. And we'll go back to our What Works Cities application. So back in February, which was my first week on the job, we all met as a team, and we had a site visit from the What Works City Evaluation Team. And we were able to show them what the department, or excuse me, what all the city departments had done, and working to achieve our, um, to sit down with them and talk about how we were trying to receive our certification level. And several of the areas that I'd like to focus on that we were able to share with them were the area of procurement. We were able to use What Works Cities to develop some best practices that were recommended by What Works Cities. We also were able to show them that Community Services Program had made some swift changes due to what was going on during the COVID pandemic. And also to work, they were able to use Work Works, What Works Cities to develop our standards and guidelines for how we would run our data governance program. As a department, we have been able to collect and publish several areas of performance metrics and performance dashboards. And those can be seen via Follow Your Money Glendale Performance Portal, as well as through Glendale Service Level Expectations that are posted right now. One of the things that we are focusing on as we collect and publish our data is making sure that it all flows into our balance scorecard. Right now, we currently have a tier-one scorecard, and we will be working with all the departments in the next, I would say, one to six months on developing tier-two scorecards, which the departments will have their own scorecard that will tie into that tier-one city scorecard. I'm proud to announce that as I've been on the job, I have been able to work with the vendors at Balance Scorecard Institute, and we will be sending nine staff members to a two-week virtual balance scorecard training on Monday, and then we have plans to send an additional twenty-five in the next three to six months. And last, we were able to turn over our Glendale One Management over to the administrative team, and Amy Hanlong will be presenting information to you in an upcoming workshop on April thirteenth. And for organizational performance, we don't have any supplemental requests for FY22, and I will welcome any questions that you all might have.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, welcome to the organization. We're glad to have you. There are a lot of, the public that's watching this, that has no idea what you're talking about. So could you give a concrete example of how your actions would help any department? Pick out any department, maybe one you've worked with already, to, to achieve whatever the goals are for that department?
Need to pull that in front of your...
Are we better now?
Way better.
Okay, Mayor and Councilmember, I, I'd like to answer that question if I can. Kayla mentioned the, um, Community Action Program, and how we spent some time working with them this last year over their COVID response. Uh, one of the first things that we did is took a look at the data that they had available on their phone calls that came into their office, to see how many were being answered and how many were not, and then worked out a plan with them to help them improve that call response. Um, and there was, I don't have the number in front of me, but there was a significant improvement in the number of calls that were answered when they had the opportunity to look at that data. One of the struggles that Community Services has, particularly in their CAP program, is the software that they use to administer their programs is a little bit challenging in getting the data out. And so we were able to help them pull the data out of that program and put together some performance dashboards, so they could monitor the spend on the grants that they received this last year, and improve their spend and spend. We, we, we wound up meeting weekly to do weekly performance, um, evaluation to see where they were at that spend. Um, and we've been working with them to help them set performance benchmarks on how to get that money spent appropriately and timely. Does that answer your question?
Mayor, if I could continue. Yes, it does. Uh, uh, our, but here's a concern or question that I would have. Everybody loves data. I love data. We all love data. But there are intangibles to making decisions. How do you account for, or do you not account for intangibles, such as the effectiveness of, say, somebody's performance, or, uh, the ability for a certain individual to lead a team, or, um, interactions between specific team members that, that might not be playing nicely in the sandbox together? How do you make allowances, or do you take into consideration those intangibles that are not necessarily data-driven?
I think one of the areas that we're actually going to be working on right now in regards to those intangible areas is that of some of the employee initiatives and strategic initiatives that we're working on. I'm currently doing a deep dive into some of the information that the employees have shared with us. We don't have that data ready today to share with you, but I will be sharing that with the staff in the upcoming months. And so we will be developing some focus groups and some things like that, so that we can guide staff and guide leadership on how we can look at those intangible areas and be able to make those decisions for our staff and team members.
Thank you, because I think that is an important component as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I have one follow-up question, uh, on your answer. So, uh, do you typically go out looking for a problem, or do the department heads usually claim and say, "We got this issue. Can you come down here and help us out"? How, how does that work, or is it both?
Mayor, we've done it both ways. Um, you know, obviously Jean, uh, Ms. Moreno from the, uh, Community Services, um, you know, I'd worked with her closely, so she reached out to me directly. But part of what, um, Ms. Stanfield has done, as she's met with the directors, is gotten an assessment of their needs and how we can work with them and provide them the services they need. And so we have a plan for the next, what's going to keep us busy for quite a long time, uh, working with these individual departments on their needs in this area.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. When, when I listen to the word organizational performance, I think about the service that the city has intended, its intended results. You're going to measure the output of that. And I think that's what the council member is asking, how, what kind of data are you going to use? So you need to, you're going to start benchmarking. Are we doing what we said we're going to do? We say we're going to improve the lives of the people we serve. That's your job. Is that correct?
Count, Mayor, Councilmember, and all of that is correct.
Okay.
And that is one of the reasons why we are developing those balance scorecards, because again, we're tying it into those four areas that we're using to improve the lives of our citizens, our staffs, and our business partners. So we're hoping that we can even revise some of the data that we have now, so that we're making sure that that data is tracking that kind of information.
Thank you. And Mayor, if I may, so very significant department, uh, led by two of you. Important for us to say we're going to do something for you, and that we do it. And you're going to benchmark that for us. So thank you for that. That's what I see when I hear the title of, of your department. That's what you're supposed to do. You're going to look at the output versus what our intended output is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Our Mayor, members of the council, our next presentation is the Audit Department, which will also be presented by Ms. Stanfield.
Mayor and Council, I will presenting, be presenting on the Audit Department. Our Audit Department has a mission of to provide internal audit services that strengthen controls, reduce risk, maximize efficiency, and enhance government transparency. We have one FTE that is allocated to this department, which is our Independent Internal Audit Program Manager. We have allocated thirty-four percent for the salary expenses and sixty-three percent for the operating budget. When we look at the performance measures for the Audit Department, we pay close attention to the workload, the efficiency, and the effectiveness. So this year, we are on target to complete seventeen audits, and those are a combination of internal and external audits. We have an estimate to complete, or to receive a hundred percent acceptance by management from those audit recommendations that have been made from our audit findings. Currently, all of our, our recommendations have been, um, accepted, and we still have a few more audits to go for the remainder of the year. And then we are on target to reach a hundred percent of the annual audit plan And then we are on target to reach 100% of the annual audit plan that was presented for and accepted by council last year. For our accomplishments, we have completed eight audits, and we currently have eight to nine more audits that are on track for this current audit plan. The department was able to complete an annual risk assessment where we sat down with all of the departments, and we asked them to analyze and give, provide us information on what risks they felt that their departments are facing, and then we were able to put that together, and that was what we used for our, for our audit plan. We were able to implement and train our staff on audit software, and we purchased software called Highbond Software through our vendor, Galvanize, and it is an audit tracking software. And so we were able to use this for audit management. Through this software, it takes away some of that manual process, and we're able to collect our data a lot easier through the software, and we're able to create not only transparency but also consistency of the data that we're collecting on each of the audits. It will also, through the software, allow us to create dashboards and also create reports for those audit findings. Another function of the software that we have is that of robotics. So there are several areas in which we will be able to configure what it is that we're looking for in those pieces of audits, and we'll be able to have continuous monitoring. And so through the software, we will be notified when there is an anomaly that comes up that is of high risk. Some of the areas that we'll be looking into for the next fiscal year is that of procurement cards and cash handling, and that's something that we will be having our internal, or excuse me, our Independent Internal Audit Program Manager do for us. As of right now, one of the accomplishments that I was able to get done in my first month here is be the liaison and make sure that we conducted a successful audit committee meeting. And so as you see there, we don't, we currently, our Independent Internal Audit Program Manager position is vacant, so I am serving in that role right now, and we are actively pursuing and recruiting for that role. We don't have any supplemental requests for FY22, and with that, I will happily welcome any questions that you all might have.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, members of the council, our final presentation is the Water Services Department, which I will turn it over to Mr. Johnson.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be here today, share our budget presentation with you. I want to, let's go to the next slide. This is our organization. We're sitting at 57,00182863 with 214.75 FTEs. Our organization FTE count is remaining the same for the next fiscal year. We've got four functional areas: administrative support, environmental programs, plant operations, and system operations. And of course, we've had this discussion before. We are there for our citizens 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Anytime they turn on the tap or they flush the toilet, it's our responsibility to make sure that everything goes the way it's supposed to go for them. So let's go to the next slide. Our budget is divided up, as shown in the pie chart here. 49% is operating, and our salaries are at 37%. These next three slides, I've got three performance slides, they're going to highlight sustainability and conservation, our water plant production, and our wastewater plant treatment facilities, and our system infrastructure operations and maintenance. As you all know, Arizona's been in a drought now going on 21 years. Sustainability of our precious resource of water is and will be our highest priority now and into the future. I want to highlight just a couple of areas here. Our CAP and our effluent recharge areas are pretty much on course, on guide path here. The, we took a little bit of a step back on the CAP because we had a record heat this last summer and fall, so we put a little bit less Colorado River water into the recharge system. But other than that, everything is, is going fine with our recharge efforts. The last three items on the chart is our square footage of our converted landscape. Took a little bit of a hit in 2020, but now they're, they're stepping forward and they're making improvements in that. The, the number of students that's being taught on our youth education program, that's, took a little bit of a hit because of COVID, but now it's coming back. And the number of participants in our green living adult classes is also hanging in there strongly. And I want to recognize our Conservation Sustainability Group. They're kind of like the little train that could, they just keep chugging along here. I just wanted to give you just a few little facts here about the landscaping conversion program. This program was established in 1986, and since that time, we put 4.7 million square foot, square feet of grass into zero scape. That equates to about 78 football fields. So that's quite a, a program that has been put together here in the city, and it's really saving, and it's really an award-winning program, and our conservation staff is to be commended for that. The other thing they did with our students is when the COVID hit and they went to long-distance learning, they actually took their presentations and they put them, recorded them, and they've been doing them through Zoom into the school, in the classrooms or into, with the students, and it's really being very successful also. And our adult classes, they've also recorded those, and they've put them on YouTube, and as of yesterday, we've had 121 hits on the YouTube part of the classes for that. So kudos to the Conservation Sustainability Group. Next slide. With respect to our water and wastewater, we are producing water at a rate higher than we have in the past. Again, last summer and fall, it was hot. So we put in, we got 14.7 million gallons, we're thinking we're going to put, billion gallons, excuse me, that we're going to put into the system this year. And next year, we'll have a target of about 14 billion gallons. Still got a strong water portfolio, but just to give you an idea how the heat affects the water demand that we're required to support. Our O and M cost for the water is hanging in there at a very, very efficient rate. In our wastewater, we're putting in 6.3 billion gallons of treated, they, the sewage is treated at the treatment plant, and we treat every drop. And one of the key things that I wanted to make about that is, we have had no sanitary sewer overflows in the city of Glendale on our public system. And that is a very, very great item that we've accomplished here. It's a great accomplishment for our collections crew, and I wanted to commend them also publicly because that is a very good protective program for the health and safety of our citizens. And our wastewater system's also got a very efficient cost at $1.58 per thousand gallons. Next slide. Our systems performance is hanging in there exactly where we wanted it to be. The John staff is doing a very fine job there. The, again, like I mentioned, we have no SSO, so that's the last item on that chart. And one of the key things that may seem insignificant, but it's a key item for John's crew is the, if you're driving around town and you see the fire hydrants all painted a nice, fresh coat of paint for a yellow paint, it is, because that gives an indication that somebody's touched that hydrant, that they've exercised it, and it's working well. So I just wanted to bring that forward as an, as an item of interest. Next slide. Accomplishments. The, right now, this week is the Arizona Water Professionals Appreciation Week, and also coinciding with that week is the Arizona Water Conference. And part of that Arizona Water Conference, they, they recognize outstanding water professionals with awards. And we've got four awards that were issued to the Water Services Department this year, and I'd like to go over them with you. Our Superintendent for Wastewater, Carla Camu, was issued the Operations Leader of the Year from the Arizona Water, and she was also issued a national award from the Association of Water Environment Federation for, called the Hatfield Award for Outstanding Performance, Operations, and Professionalism. Louis Gomez, he was, he's also the supervisor at the West Area Water Reclamation Facility, and he was, he was awarded the Operations Supervisor of the Year. And then our Conservation Sustainability Group, they were issued the Arizona Water Outstanding Sustainability Award for Internal and External Sustainable Educational Opportunities. Our Arrowhead Water Reclamation Facility was, is the first of our four major plant rehabilitation projects. That is completed, and the Arrowhead Waste- Activated Sludge Line, which was a priority line that had to be done to, so the plant could be fully operational, has also been completed. And you guys are already aware that we had our intergovernmental agreement approved by Luke Air Force Base, and we've also installed the sewer line for the Luke Air Force Base Lift Station. It's all complete, and the lift station will be starting construction here in the next month and be completed by the end of the year. And one other, one last item I wanted to add to the, to the accomplishments is, we have also activated in our asset management system, so now we're fully operational with that for both our vertical elements and our horizontal elements, and we're managing about 600,000 assets through that system. Next slide. Supplementals. We have five supplementals for your approval, and I'm just going to go down the five of them here between these two slides. Our raw water is, need $100,000 for that. There's 20, there's rate increases by CAP of 25,000 and rate increases by SRP 75,000. The West Area Reclamation Facility, since we're adding Luke Air Force Base, and they're going to be coming online in, in Jan, January, we're going to want to add $110,000 for the operation of that, but they will also be paying us back in, in full with that over time. Also, our Pyramid Peak expansion, as you know, Peoria is a part owner of our plant for us, and we are going to put them in operation towards the end of the year, and that will require an additional $160,000 in operating cost for the expansion, but that will be paid back over time through their new increased ownership rate of 44% versus 23%. We also have additional chemical requirements for Choya and Oasis Water Treatment Plants, and also hydrogen peroxide for our sewage collection system. And that will be totaled to 400,000. And our building maintenance system, kudos to Michelle Waitinko, she was, she was able to give us an assessment on our roofing and our air conditioning units for all of our facilities, and we've broken those down, and we'll have, we, we're putting in for $290,000. That includes the 220 on this slide and the 70,000 on the next slide. So that, there's $1,060,000 worth of supplementals for these added items. And we can go to questions.
I don't, I don't have a question as much as a statement this morning. I was coming to work rather early, and I noticed a tremendous amount of water on Bethany Home Road as I was traveling east, and then the water seemed like it cleared up, and then it seemed like, seen a lot of water, and then it seemed like it cleared up again, and like four different times, and I was trying to figure out what in the world was going on. And it was one of your guys out there basically clearing those hydrants out. And so with that said, I'm glad to see him do that, make sure that they're operating in case the fire department shows up and they have working hydrants. But I don't remember exactly where I've seen it, but you had a request for a truck that was going to be able to recirculate that water instead of running it down the road. Is that correct?
Mayor, councilmembers, that's one of the list of projects on the CARES program that's, that, and what that truck does is it connects in between two hydrants, and it runs the water, instead of running it in the street, it runs the water through the truck, it filtrages it, rechlorinates it, puts it back into the system as cleaner water. And that keep, it avoids one is wasting water, and it also keeps the water out of the street. And that would be a very advantageous tool for us to have. Goodyear, I think, is going to pick up one, and we got a demonstration of it about 18 months ago out of, they came over from California, and it works really well.
Well, I'm excited to see it, not, not only for the water savings, but for the people that just washed their vehicles that just drove through that.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, water, water services, the services you provide to the, to the residents and to the city can be easily overlooked by, by us and by our residents because it's just kind of a, you turn the water on, it comes out, you flush your toilet. But it's such a critical service for our city, and you and your staff, I mean, anytime I, any resident ever contacts with me with any issue, you guys are right on top of it. So you may not get the kudos that you, you know, you deserve because it's, it's just kind of a thoughtless thing for us to, you know, water is, we, it's just, we don't think about how important it is and how much work happens in the background to deliver this service to our residents. It's a very detailed work that you do. I know, a few years ago, I did, from, with help from your staff, I did From Watershed to Showerhead to kind of show residents how much work goes into just delivering water out of a shower to residents, and it's just, it's really, really a lot of work, and you guys make it look easy. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, we don't have anything else. I do have one thing that I want to bring up, and some of you may or may not be aware, we have a, we have an issue that's been, been growing, not just for the city of Glendale, but literally across the nation, and, and that's presumptive cancer with firefighters. It's something that the legislature has addressed. It's something that currently is in front of the legislature right now. They're changing, and it will pass, I'm certain of it. We don't, the firefighters won't have to prove that they got the cancer from their occupation. The cities will have to prove that they didn't, which is going to make it even more difficult. I guess the point I'm making is, it's a fight that I don't want to be in, I don't think anybody wants to be in. It's the fact that if firefighters are getting cancer because of their occupation, I think that we need to step up, and we need to make sure that we have our city in line, in a position to cover those costs when they come. Because they are coming. I guarantee you they're coming. And even after someone retires until they basically are able to draw on the federal retirement, the city's responsible for that. So with that, I, I'm going to real briefly read a little statement I've got here, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions. Again, there's been a lot of policy discussions in Arizona over the last few years in regards to the public safety personal cancer claims. And I know that Glendale has committed to continuing to be leaders in providing public safety personnel with equipment, technology needed to mitigate the exposures to things that could cause cancer, and we just did that with Chief Garrison just a few minutes ago. Our public safety funding increases in this budget demonstrate just how important health and safety of our police and fire is to this council, and I have no doubt in my mind that there's not a council member sitting here that doesn't want to do everything that we possibly can for our firefighters. However, we are facing a reality of an increased number of cancer claims that's being submitted. In all likelihood, they're going to continue to increase in the future. I want to make sure as a city that we're prepared to provide a stable, sustainable plan to help address the increasing claims and the growing costs to our workers' compensation funds. As a part of a solution, and believe me, I, I thought about this long and hard, and I think I may surprise people when I want to actually say this, so don't be totally shocked, but as a, a part of the solution, I'd like the council to please consider taking advantage of the constitutionally allowed 2% increase in our primary property tax that we've done a great job the last six years in not increasing. We're allowed a 2% increase in our primary property tax rate. The 2% funding would go into a dedicated special fund for the sole purpose of building up funding to help pay for these growing workers' compensation claims. Now, it's my understanding that that increase would, would generate about 120,000 here with. which I know is not going to be enough to, to cover everything, but I think it's a good place to start, and it's something that I think is very, very defendable with our citizens, and I think it's certainly something that we need to do for firefighters. So with that, I certainly would hap, be happy to try and answer any questions if the council has any, but I would, I guess I would like a consensus to move forward with the city manager to see what we'd have to do to make that happen. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate the thought and the idea, but, and I know you mentioned to, to me earlier you were thinking about this a couple weeks ago probably, but in order to, to actually really have any meaningful amount of money in here, it would take years to get where we would need to get, and I, I'd like to have the conversation of, set aside, of basically to bank some of this American Recovery Plan money, to bank some of that money also for this, that we have money set aside that we're, I don't know what the amount of money, we'd have to, you know, have some of those people a lot smarter than me figure out how much that would be, but we have an opportunity to bank a meaningful amount of money. I think one case is, I mean, per person is a million dollars, or, I mean, I know these, these can be astronomical numbers, it would take us, you know, I know it accumulates, so it'd probably be less than 10 years, but maybe eight years to get to even just a million dollars with property tax. So I, while I, I understand and appreciate the idea, I don't think the, in considering how much citizens don't like to have their taxes increased, and into how long it would actually take us to accumulate a meaningful amount of money to dedicate towards this, I agree, we need to set some money aside, but we have, we're going to be getting a sizable amount of money, or we're already getting a sizable amount of money for this. I don't know whether this money's even going to be eligible for that, so that would be, we'd have to talk about that at the workshop, but before, at least I want to make a decision, I'd like to have a holistic conversation about the American Recovery Plan funding before I would be willing to give a consensus to raise the property taxes at this time.
And I appreciate that. I, I had, actually Senator Kelly was in my office yesterday morning, and what was supposed to be about a 30-minute meeting ended up being over an hour. I, I brought this very subject up to him, and until we know exactly what we can spend that money on, we can't plan that money for anything, but I think this is a good starting place, and claims to, and Mr. Phelps, correct me if I'm wrong, but the claims typically wouldn't be a, for instance, a million dollars upfront, it's going to be the differences that they have that go along, so this is a stepping stone, it's not large, it's defendable with the citizens. If, if they care about their firefighters, the people coming to them to rescue them as much as we do, I think it's a very, very small price to pay, and it's something that we've held the line on by not raising taxes at all. I'm the last guy that wants to raise taxes, and if there's a way that we could use CARES funds on top of this, and then not have to come back next year, the following year, and increases, I'd be all for that. But I think we got to start somewhere, and I think it has to happen before we make a decision on the budget this year.
Could, could you explain what you mean by stepping stone? Because the, the, the numbers that I've been shown of the cost of, of just even one presumptive cancer case with workman's comp, and it's not just the medical, it's, it's if the person's not able to return to work, so I want to make sure I understand how this, this amount of money could be meaningful.
Mr. Phelps, do you want to briefly talk about sort of the steps on the claims and how that would work? Not, not this money, but basically currently the way it is now.
Mayor, members of the council, so, yeah, I mean, you know, we have one case that's estimated that if the person actually hits all the targets, that the projection has been, it could be close to $5 million in cost that the city will bear for this one case, but it will happen over a period of this person's lifetime, and so I think that's what you're referencing, is that it, we don't get a claim on the front end for the entire amount, it generally is, you know, collected. Now, I do know that in, in talking with our intergov, government relations manager with Ryan Lee, that there has been discussion as well of the state perhaps participating, so I, if I understand what you're saying is we would take the property, we would, we would reserve it for this, but make it a, an account that other types of funding could go into, either be at budget time or if the state is participating, and again, we can certainly work on that if that's the desire of the council.
And that's exactly it. I, I can't count on the state to do anything, and, and I, and I don't want that to sound mean, but we, we can't bank on whatever the state's going to do, we don't know what they're going to do. We can hope that, that as the bills go through, something happens, but last year, every, pretty much everything died at the last minute. Again, it's a very small amount initially, it does set up a, basically a placeholder, but it also allows us in the future, if we choose to increase or decrease, and we have that option, but it's, it's, it's an account that we would have, we have to do something now, we can't keep putting this off, just can't. Mr. Miller?
Mayor, my initial thoughts, of course, is I want, I don't want anything to do with the tax increase, however, based on what you've explained here, it is a real cost, and I know that over time it can build, it's not going to cover the whole cost by any means. Well, I can, we can be hopeful, according to an article yesterday in the newspaper, or maybe it was this morning, the state was supposedly setting aside $20 million to help cover costs of the, the new legislation. I would hope that the state will be covering a, a chunk of this through their own budgeting process, because it is going to all come back to the city, otherwise our insurance companies are going, not going to insure, and so we've got to have a funding source. That's, that's the bottom line, there's got to be a funding source. And so, however, whatever funding source that is, this might be a beginning, and it's an ongoing funding source that will grow annually. I'm not really in favor, as I said, of property tax increase, but at the same time, we must take care of the, the needs of the firefighters in this, in this dilemma that we have with, with the funding, so somehow we have to take care of it, so I would be in favor of at least discussing it further and moving forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your thoughtful look at the issue, but I am unequivocally opposed to raising the property tax and will not support that concept. You say that the amount raised would be minimal, somewhere in the range of 120,000 a year. New growth in revenues that the city receives every year is far more substantial than 120,000 a year. I would much rather us look at a funding source such as that, taking a certain amount of the new growth in revenues that the city is receiving and applying that to such funding, rather than raising property taxes. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor? Go ahead.
Mayor, that's pretty loud there. Unequivocally, I would be very supportive, I would have two requests, so one might just derail it, but absolutely, I, I think it's, it's forward-thinking that we put a small piggy bank in place for firefighters. Here's all I would ask. The first one is simple, let's, let's just have it, bring it to a workshop so we can talk about what it's, how much we're going to save and how much it's going to affect the, the resident. I too never want to raise taxes, frankly want to lower them, which will segue into my second request. I'd do it today, Mayor. Can we reduce the food tax by a micro percentage that can help us justify that? We talked about it, we never brought it back, but food has been in the increase significantly. I'm just asking for a micro percentage reduction to show good faith, and absolutely I would be supportive of, of a dedicated tax for, for firefighters' presumptive cancer.
Yeah, thanks.
If somebody would, if they would consider that, that'd be a home run.
Mr. Hugh?
Thank you, Mayor. I think quite a few of us stood with you without raising our property tax. When we had the opportunity to do so, I think this would be the, the right time to do it with the action, to protect ourselves and, and to make sure we can pay the claims that we know are coming. And the citizens, it, it's a small tax, I, I can't see any of them being upset over it, realizing, most people have seen that, that fire truck or the paramedics in their neighborhood or at their own house. I know I'm one of them that uses them, and I'll be in favor of it, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, I fundamentally oppose increasing the, the property tax, but I, as I said before, I was just, I double-checked our, our list here, we don't have to adopt the property tax levy until June 8th, that's when we, we have to vote on this. The legislature's going to signee die here in another few more weeks, probably. We're going to have a lot more information in a few weeks than we have right now to make, what, what the, we're going to have the workshop on the American Recovery Plan money, we're going to have a lot more information over the next few weeks to decide whether this is something that we should or shouldn't do. So I'm not prepared right now to say, I'm telling you I'm inclined to be a no, but I'm willing to wait for more information before I wake up, I wake up, I'm awake, before I make up my mind, that, but because there is more information coming, the legislature's going to adopt a budget, we're going to know whether there's any money on the table for this or not in a few weeks, and, and we're going to understand, you know, what, what the options are for the 60 million, around 60 million that we receive from the federal government, too. So we've got other, other options, and I'd like to see what those are and have, and maybe just roll this into that discussion on that day, so we, at that point, have more information to decide. I'm not what, ready to say no yet, but I'm not ready to say yes either, so I'll say I need more information.
Mayor, excuse me, if I could, just one point of, of order is that if council does decide to go ahead with the constitutionally allowed 2% increase in property tax, there is a whole series of notices that need to be published and go out about that, so to do that in this tax year, we would, we would need to know, probably today is, is the day we would need to know in order to meet all of those deadlines. It could be done in the future, but in order to adopt it as we would in June, or it needs to be, we would need to know now because of the required notifications.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I think the financial impact of this presumptive cancer bill has been something that has been on the minds of all of us and every city council member, you know, for every city and town in the state, not to mention the boards of all the various fire districts. I'm concerned about doing something that won't fully address or even nearly fully address the problem. I think the problem needs to be addressed at the state level, and that we should be working to find solutions with the Arizona League of Cities and Towns that we could put forward. One that I would recommend, and that I've kind of settled on as might be the best solution, would just be a statewide, a very small statewide tax on insurance premiums for property and casualty insurance. That's what firefighters are incurring this cancer risk protecting, is all of the property that we have that they protect, it's insured, and a very small statewide tax on, on our insurance premium could create a pool than that any fire jurisdiction, whether it's municipal or, or a fire district, would be able to dip into for excess cancer claims. I think we need to solve this at a statewide level, and that it's more than we could justly try to do even at our city level, and I think we need to work statewide to get a real answer to this. Thank you.
And I, I appreciate all the comments, I can assure you that we have been working with the state trying to find a solution, and it's not happening, and I am not willing to keep kicking the can down the road. This, this is a real problem, that if we don't deal with this now, we're going to be paying big time. This is a situation that I truly believe in my heart, there's going to be a lot of small cities that are going to be seriously, seriously, seriously in trouble for not dealing with it. I think it's a very small request, it gets us going in the right direction, we can always change as we go along, but if we don't start doing something now, we're going to be in serious trouble. So I, I would ask that we do get a consensus to move forward with this. If we find that we end up getting a whole bunch of money that we could use, we could always stop this process in the middle of the stream, is that correct?
Mayor, members of the council, yes, that is correct.
Very good.
We have, we have a, a notice that has to be put out, but we can always do the notice and then decide later not to do it. There will be a point in time when, once you've kind of been going, you, you can't kind of retract it, but, but I don't have that date in my head at the moment.
No, I was just going to say, if, if I have to make up my mind today, then I would be in opposition of raising the property tax. We've, we've got it, we've got a substantial amount of money to solve the problem at the minimum for one more year, with the money coming to us, so if, I have to decide right now, I haven't really had time to think all this through, and I don't know, I don't know big picture, so, but I mean, 120 or 150,000 dollars for one year's not going to make a whole lot of difference. If we see nothing else has transpired and there's no other way to start moving this forward, I'd be happy to discuss it, but I don't know enough about big picture things, other things that are happening to say, yes, let's raise. I know it's not a lot of money to the citizens, but it's, they find it incredibly offensive to have their property tax raised, so I wouldn't be in support of it, at least not today.
And again, I appreciate everyone's concerns, I think, I think this is very defendable to anybody, the fact that legislatively we're required by law to take care of this presumptive cancer, it's going towards firefighters that come out and save people's lives, put out property fires, and I think it's something for, I think it's, somebody told me less than $10 per average per home, per year, I think is what I'd heard somewhere, it's a very small amount. I think that that's defendable, and, and I certainly wouldn't have a problem explaining to my constituents, which happened to be also all of your constituents, the reason that I had pushed for this, so I would ask for a consensus to move forward with this. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd still like to ask if, if there's consensus to reduce the food tax even by, let's say, 25, a percentage that would get us to, let's say, $25,000 a year, and you'd have my yes vote right now?
Yeah, well, and we're not voting.
That's very little to ask.
Yeah, we're not voting, it's a consensus I'm asking for.
Consensus, you'd have my consensus.
To move forward, and that's something that I, I can't speak for the rest of the council. I'd be happy to look at, but I can't make you that guarantee right now, I can't.
Well, that's why I'm asking the council now, so Vic, Ms. Rios is here to let us know how that can happen, if you want to reduce the food tax by 25,000 a year, yeah, my consensus.
Mr. Phelps?
Mayor, so, one, one thing we, I want to make sure we understood what Vicki had said. I think your question was, over, over time, could you decide not to increase property taxes on a long-term commitment? And that answer would be yes. I think what she, what Vicki also was trying to say is, if the council needs more time to study that, this issue, so we could address issues of, of options for reducing sales tax, et cetera, what you could do today is, we could go ahead and post for the increase, and then we have an amount of time between now to when we actually have to do the increase. So it would buy you a few weeks to be able to have a workshop and to get into it, and then if the council said, no, we still, we don't want to raise the property tax, then you could, it still wouldn't be a fait accompli. But that would give us more time to look at the food issue. One of the challenges with the food issue is, you could only, you can only decrease by a, a specific increment of the sales tax, and so likely it's, by the way we do it, it'd be hard to come up with a $25,000 number, it may be a tenth of 1%, and that tenth of 1% would be a much larger number.
Yeah, my consensus to move with Kevin's plan, I'm, I'm fine with that. I have an opportunity to agree or disagree.
Aaron?
Were you pointing at me? I want to make sure.
Well, you, you looked like you had another question.
I did, I did, well, I just, I wanted to say, you're saying basically the same thing I'm saying, is that you haven't, with, regarding the food tax, you haven't had time to study it, to think it through. We've been having budget meetings and conversations for months, and then to, to present this now and want a decision right now, I'm, I mean, I'm not going to, I'm just not willing to be part of the consensus today, so.
And we understand that.
So, but I mean, I, we, this, if this would have come up maybe a, a couple of weeks ago, I might, I might be able to support it, but not, but not today.
Mr. Hugh?
No, I, I agree with moving forward, and you have my consensus.
Stated previously, I do not support and do not give my consensus.
Right, I, I, obviously, I brought it up, so I do support it, which I believe we do have consensus at this point, is that correct? Yes. Yes. So again, it's still a work in progress, but it allows us to continue to move forward as we get the, the information. We may not have to do this. I'm the last guy that wants to raise any taxes and I think I've, I think I've been pretty prudent on trying to keep taxes low, but I, I can't think of another tax that we have that people would accept as easy as this particular one, it's property tax. And that's the very reason why firefighters are getting this, this presumptive cancer is fighting fires. I think it's very defendable and, and bottom line, we got it, we got to do something. This is, it's real. It's happening, it's not going to go away. We have to deal with it. Mr. Phelps?
So, Mr. Mayor, what we'll do if this pleases the council, we'll go ahead and, and just cover the bases for the city by doing the necessary posting, which I believe tomorrow is a, is a hard date that we have to at least start indicating intent. Meanwhile, what we'll do is we'll put together very quickly a workshop and we'll certainly ask, we can ask our legislative team to also kind of give a, a more recent update on where things are at. We can look into the other issues around sales tax that have been brought up here and then you can have your discussion. And again, if the decision changes at that point, we, we can, we'll have plenty of time to undo what's being done on the posting tomorrow.
All right, very good. And I apologize to the council that I brought it up today and that, two weeks ago, I didn't realize of the time constraints, but I, I was very hesitant on bringing this up until I was certain that, I, I couldn't think of any other way to get, get the job done. We have to deal with it. And Mr. Phelps and I are both on PSPRS. We, we hear these things come up, I don't know how often we do it, it seems like it's every week, but I guess it's once or twice a month, but it's, it's going to get worse, it's not going to get better. And, and that's, that's my concern. So with that, I don't think we have anything else in front of us today. Is that correct? Anybody?
Mayor, members of the council, that concludes our presentation for today. Our next presentation will be April 20th and we will present the tentative draft budget and 10-year capital improvement program.
All right, no further business?
Mayor? Mayor, I'm sorry. Yeah, I just want to use just a personal point of privilege to wish my wife Monica a happy birthday. I know she's watching. Honey, I love you and happy birthday. Thank you, Mayor.
30 years old.
That is correct, Mayor. She heard you loud and clear.
That's what you were telling everybody.
That's what I said, 30 years old. Thank you.
All right, with that, we're adjourned. Good, look at that.